Let me call to order the Williamsport City Council Meeting of April 25th, 2019. Please rise for invocation by Councilman Allison, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight and give you thanks for the many blessings that we enjoy in this city, Lord. We focus a lot on the negatives and talk a lot about them and legislate a lot about them, but we sometimes forget the many good things we have going in this city. And amongst them foremost are the people that we have. There are a lot of good, caring people in this city that aren't elected officials and are out of the limelight, but they do so much good work to help everybody in the community to rise to a higher level. We thank you. We have community people like that. And we also thank you for the beautiful natural resources that those of us who have lived here for a long time take for granted, but it's a blessing that we can't. It's a resource that we need to protect, save, and cherish so that we can hand it on to future generations. And tonight, I also want to ask you to help us navigate the waters ahead this year. There are many big issues ahead of us which we've talked about and mentioned, but I pray for your wisdom tonight, your guidance, and your strength to lead us through in every situation and every decision, and I ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. Next item on the agenda is approval of City Council Meeting Minutes dated April 11th, 2019. May I have a motion and a second to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions on that approval? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and those minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is limited courtesy of the floor. We've had no requests for that this evening, so we can move on to the next item, which is a resolution naming April 1st Kiwanis Day in Williamsport. Mrs. Frank.
Resolution honoring the Kiwanis Club of Williamsport, Pennsylvania to declare April 1st of each year to be Kiwanis Day. Whereas on April 1st, 1919, Ira F. Quinn B. founded the Kiwanis Club of Williamsport and today boasts a membership of around 80 community members and provides thousands of dollars in the form of donations and scholarships. Whereas the Kiwanis Club serves hundreds of volunteer hours to our community each year, and whereas the Kiwanis Club of Williamsport has been the home club for several governors and lieutenant governors of the Pennsylvania District of Kiwanis. And whereas the Kiwanis Club of Williamsport sponsors nine local service leadership programs in the community, and whereas the city of Williamsport would like to recognize and congratulate the Kiwanis for their 100th years of service to the community. Now therefore, via a resolve by the City Council and Mayor of the city of Williamsport would like to declare as follows that April 1st of each year is Kiwanis Day in the city of Williamsport.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing motion, second. Mr. Mayor, how are you this evening?
I'm doing great, Dr. President, Mr. Vice President, members of City Council. It is an honor and pleasure to present this resolution publicly. I'd like to thank Janice Frank for facilitating this and all the members of the Kiwanis, not only current members, but members that have served our community for many, many years. Thank you so much on behalf of the city for everything that you've done and things that you're going to do in the future.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from members of council? Mr. Noviello?
I've had the pleasure over the last 10 years of working with some folks in the Kiwanis with the Soapbox Derby we run every year. And I can pretty much guarantee that we would not be where we are today if it hadn't been for the help of the Kiwanis groups, their manpower, their attitude really lifts us up a lot of different times. Just their volunteerism is a testimonial to the caliber of people there and how they think so much of our city and all those that are taking place with some of the things that we do do collectively, like the derby. We're working with 60 families during the course of the derby, and the Kiwanis plays a great role in helping us get through that process. It's about a six-month process to get the race ready, and the Kiwanis is there every time. So we want to thank them for that and thank them for their overall history in the city of Williamsport as well.
Thank you. Mrs. Katz.
Is there anyone here from the Kiwanis tonight?
Yes.
Can they stand so we can say thank you very much and acknowledge them?
Could the members, could the members come up here, please?
Yes, would they like to say anything?
Please, if one or more of you would like to speak, we invite you to do so. Yep?
Yes.
Yes, please.
My name's Jason Hurwitz. I am currently president of the Kiwanis Club of Williamsport. Very much appreciative to council and to the mayor for this honor of making April 1st Kiwanis Day in the city of Williamsport. It's a very exciting year for us. We're celebrating our 100th year of the charter of the Kiwanis Club of Williamsport. And as we do that and we boast a membership of around 80 members, we are currently the largest club, Kiwanis club, in the state of Pennsylvania. We have activities ongoing throughout the year, and it's just really been a pleasure looking at what we've accomplished over the last 100 years and looking forward to what we're going to be doing as we move into the next 100 years. So we would invite anybody that's interested to come to our lunch meeting as a guest of the club. We meet every Thursday at the Genetti for lunch at noon, so that invitation is always welcome to any of you who would like to attend. And you can also find us, of course, on Facebook and on the web to see what we're doing. We've got great projects coming up. We're just kicking off a really wonderful, all-inclusive playground project called the Kids United Playground Project. That's going to be a playground at Stevens Elementary that will be accessible to kids of every ability level so that way everybody can have a good time outside under the sun. And we're doing that in partnership with the Rotary Club of Williamsport and also the school district, Williamsport School District. So lots of fun things and exciting things happening in the club. And again, thank you very much to the mayor and to council for this honor. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Slaughter?
You know, I just want to echo the sentiments already and say thank you for the first 100 years. I had the pleasure of attending the dinner for the 100th anniversary dinner gala, and I learned a lot of history about Kiwanis that I didn't know prior. So they're obviously a great asset to our community. I appreciate what they have done, what they're currently doing, and I look forward to obviously the completion of the playground and all the other positivities that you bring to the city and the surrounding area. So, thank you.
Definitely, thank you.
Other comments? I have a small question for you, Mr. Hurwitz.
Sure.
I've heard a lot of great things about the accessible playground project at Stevens Elementary, and if we get questions about how individuals might contribute to that effort, would that also be available on your website and on Facebook?
Absolutely. There's actually a dedicated Facebook page and also a dedicated website for that. I don't remember off the top of my head what the address is, but certainly if you go to our Facebook page, you can find links and information and same through our website. Absolutely.
And I did encourage anybody who is so inclined to please do so because it's a great project and something that, you know, I think kids will very much enjoy. And things like playgrounds in our communities really bring those communities together and build a stronger, richer community as a result.
Absolutely. And if I might add to that, of course, donations are gladly being accepted by anybody who might be interested in doing that at any level, but we do have one of our strategic partners coming in next Friday, I believe it is, to give sort of a walkthrough of the site to explain what's going to be there and answer any questions that potential donors might have. So if you're interested in that, again, please reach out, you know, through one of the many ways you can reach us, and we'd be happy to schedule a time to get together on that as well.
Great, thank you.
You can also call Wayne Fosnot, he's chairperson of that.
Yes.
The other phone number to look up apparently just to get it on the microphone here is Wayne Fosnot. He's the chair of that effort, and he'll be happy to take everyone's contributions and put it in the right spot.
Yep, absolutely.
If there are no other comments from members of council, I believe we need Mrs. Frank to read the roll call though.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that resolution is approved. Next item on the agenda is a resolution honoring Chief Todd Heckman.
Resolution honoring Fire Chief Todd Heckman.
Is there a motion and a second to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Let me read from the resolution here. Whereas Fire Chief Todd Heckman served with distinction on March 31st, 2019 for a reported structure fire with possible entrapment in the city of Williamsport, whereas Chief Todd Heckman was returning home when he saw smoke coming from a structure at that address and was advised that a woman was trapped on the second floor. Whereas Chief Todd Heckman initially attempted to enter through the stairs but was driven back by smoke and flames. A neighbor retrieved a ladder that was raised to the front porch roof, and after climbing the ladder, Chief Heckman heard the woman banging on the second floor window. Chief Heckman broke the window with his portable radio and pulled the woman onto the porch roof. When firefighters and police officers arrived, they raised another ladder and assisted the woman down the ladder where she was taken to EMS Cruz, transported to UPMC Susquehanna, and treated for smoke inhalation exposure and lacerations to her feet. Whereas, as a result of the dedication and service of Chief Todd Heckman, the city of Williamsport, County of Lecomming, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania has left with a proud past along with a more promising future. And now for, at our meeting assembled this 25th day of April, 2019, Williamsport City Council does hereby acknowledge and express on behalf of the citizens of Williamsport our deep appreciation and gratitude for the contributions, for the service and efforts of Todd Heckman. We have a motion and a second, and so I'm going to shake his hand and then ask for comments and questions from members of council.
Any more?
No.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. The comments or questions? I suppose I should let Mr. Allison call the people.
Oh. Mr. Henderson, do you have something to say?
Sure, absolutely. We are so proud and grateful, and we recognize that Williamsport is truly blessed to have such an honorable and selfless man serving as our fire chief and providing leadership to the entire department. And this is obviously a recognition of that. We're blessed to have other citizens as well that have been a part of that and helping out in that as well. I think even some may be here this evening, and we might mention them in just a minute. But these public servants risk their own life, their own safety, for our safety, and it's so vitally important that we recognize that and that we encourage our young people to pursue that kind of life and to lift up before them real heroes. We have real heroes, and they may not wear capes, but they do save lives. And so I think it's just very fitting that we recognize our chief in this way, and we had a little discussion about it in the Public Safety Committee, and it says that our chief was not on duty at the time, but the reality is our firemen and our chief is always on duty, and so we are thankful for that, and this is a testament to that. So we want to thank him and the others as well for their service and help in this incredible selfless act. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Any other comments? Mr. Noviello?
I think Mr. Henderson stole my notes, so I'm just going to reflect some of the same commentaries, actually. I've had the pleasure of working with Chief Heckman for a number of years here now. He's a pleasure to work with, a quality character, quality personality that is expressed not only in his dealings with us on council in routine time, but obviously in this particular incident that we're recognizing here tonight. So I just want to add my recognition and my thanks for that service and for your friendship and cooperation as often as I've seen it since I've been on council again, so thank you.
Mrs. Katz.
Thank you very much. It just shows the quality of leadership that we have in our departments, and thank you again.
Thank you. Mr. Slaughter?
Same sentiments. Thank you. Appreciate all that you and everyone does on the force. Thank you.
Mr.?
Yes.
Chief, one of the best decisions I've ever made during my tenure was to appoint you as chief. Thank you for your leadership, your grace, your humbleness, and most importantly, your courage. Thank you once again. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Appreciate that.
And I'd just like to add, I'll get to go last. I've seen, I've mentioned this before, I've seen Chief Heckman and the department close up several times in action, and my understanding of situations like that or any situation where a structure is involved, that there's no safe structure fire, no matter how small it might seem, and there's a huge risk every time our fire department goes out and answers a call that involves fire. So we're thankful and grateful. I don't think we can totally appreciate the things that you do and the hard work you put in between fires and on a daily basis to be ready to do a great job, which is what you do. So I thank you as well.
Thank you, Michelle.
And let me just have the, say on behalf of the citizens of Williamsport that we all as elected officials represent. It's our fire department, our police department, our codes department, our other departments in the city that do the hard, heavy lifting on a day-by-day basis and the kind of selflessness that are represented by this resolution and the next and some others that we've recently also had is but a small recognition of the appreciation that we and the citizens of Williamsport have for your professionalism and your courage and your leadership and the work that goes unseen and probably too little appreciated on a day-to-day basis. So on behalf of all of them, let me shake your hand one more time.
Thank you, sir.
And I've also asked Chief to have a few words for us.
I just want to add that the whole experience that was humbling is something we would do on a heartbeat. I got the best team in this country, 32 of them. There's some more here tonight, you'll hear from them shortly. But I also would like to go ahead and recognize Officers McGee and Shown, another citizens-at-large, Casey Parker, who has some past firefighting experience, and also Mr. Chad Anthony, who is the son of our retired fire chief, Butch Anthony. We were the team that got me up to their porch roof to get in the window. I didn't do it myself, although I was going to use the two officers as a human ladder. They didn't know that. I'll explain to that later, but other than that, it wasn't, it was, I was just the idiot that climbed in the window. It was a team effort getting me up on the porch, but I do appreciate it, and I want to thank everybody here, and we're here for you, and any of these guys and myself would do this any day on a given chance, so thank you very much.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the resolution carries.
Has ever not passed.
Well, thank you again, and if you will, Mr. Allison, I'll go ahead and hand this one to him for his, or is this the official one, Mrs. Frank? Okay. This is the, oh, this one's here.
Thank you.
And ask the chief to stay up for our next resolution. Mrs. Frank.
Honoring Fire Platoon B.
Kind of a motion and a second to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
And while I read it, I ask Platoon B of our fire department to join us. Whereas on Monday, February 25th, 2019, Lecomming County dispatched Station 1 Williamsport Bureau of Fire to an address in the city of Williamsport for a report of smoke coming from a home and recognizing the members of B Platoon for actions carried out during this incident that reduced injury to the interior crew and saved their lives. Whereas the members of B Platoon while initially operating and conducting interior fire ground operations at what would become a three-alarm fire, the interior crew consisting of Acting Platoon Chief, and I'm going to ask you to step forward with each name so I don't have to find you behind me here, Acting Platoon Chief Kevin Hearn, Engineer Jeremy Vogt, and firefighters Joel Schern and Gregory Delaney, recognizing rapidly deteriorating conditions through training and situational awareness and experience averted serious injury or tragedy. The four-member team suffered relatively minor injuries during the event consisting of first and second degree burns and an exposure element to what they have just been through. The team continued to fight fire alongside their brothers to stop the spread of the fire to either of the exposure buildings located on either side of the original fire building until sufficient manpower arrived on scene to replace them. Whereas recognizing all members of the Bureau of Fire on the initial scene working at this incident and maintained a calm, systematic approach to bringing the incident under control and to a calm resolve. Now therefore, at our meeting assembled this 25th day of April, 2019, Williamsport City Council does hereby acknowledge and express on behalf of the citizens of the city of Williamsport our deep appreciation and gratitude for the contributions, for the service and efforts displayed by members of the Bureau of Fire and particularly the four firefighters who risk their lives every day to protect the citizens and property not just within the city boundaries but wherever we may, they may be summoned. And further, that the city clerk is hereby directed to present a copy of this resolution to the Williamsport firefighters. And so I will, while I'm asking Mr. Allison to be the traffic cop to gather comments from my colleagues on council, I'll come through and shake everybody's hand. That's the fun job.
Comments or questions by council tonight?
Thank you, guys, very much.
We appreciate everything that you do for us. I don't think you get thanked enough, I really do, and I know how hard you work, and I have a fireman that's a neighbor, and I know how conscientious he is, and I know it goes through all of you, and thank you. Thank you very much for your service.
Mr. Noviello?
I've also had occasion, as Mr. Allison noted, to see our teams in action from a distance. I always keep a safe distance when I'm there, watching those things. And I certainly don't know too much about firefighting tactics, but I think I've been around long enough to know efficiency when I see it, and I think I've seen professionalism expressed more than a few times at the number of scenes that I've been to, and obviously this is no less of an occurrence of that same circumstance. I'm thankful and grateful that they all came out healthy and in good condition, so appreciate those efforts, appreciate the continued work you're going to be providing as we go through the next year here as well, so just again, a very quick thank you.
Mr. Henderson?
I also want to thank you and as all of the citizens of Williamsport should be and I think will, but we, this underscores, I think, the importance of our city maintaining a professional fire department and the training that you've received, that you've put into action, and your ability to respond the right way just when all the pressure's there, even in the face of danger and even with injuries. And so we are very grateful for what you do, and with our condensed population, I don't know where we would be without a professional department such as yourself, and so we want to thank you so much for the time that you put in, the training that you go through, and then your quick response in situations such as this. Thank you so much.
Mr. Slaughter?
Again, just echo those sentiments. You know, we say thank you, and obviously are very appreciative for what you do on a day-to-day basis. Thank you.
And we do appreciate it, and gentlemen, we're proud of you. We realize that you face unique situations in a city like Williamsport where we have an older housing stock and houses are close together, and you have, you face those extra challenges beyond the fire itself every time you go out, so thank you for a job well done.
And I'll add a couple final thoughts for me. As Mrs. Fosnot will know, I've had a high level of respect for our fire department and their professionalism from just about the first day I started serving on council. They are a fine group that represent our city well on a day-to-day basis, and when we need to in the citizens' sort of worst hours, they step up and keep us safe and protect our property to the best and highest level possible. And I agree 100% with Mr. Henderson. We must do what we can to our best of our ability to make sure that we maintain their ability to sustain that level of professionalism, to continue to keep us safe in the future. So thank you again, in particular for this, the work that you did in this particular instance, but just in general for the work that you all have done and your colleagues have done for many years. Any other comments? Mrs. Frank.
Yes. Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the resolution carries, and I will present this now to, who should I present to? And stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I keep it? Mr. Girardi, does it make sense to jump down to yours? Okay. Excuse me. Then I'm going to move down to agenda item number 12. Certificate of appropriateness for 211 Basin Street. Mr. Girardi, how are you this evening?
Good, and how are you this evening?
Good.
Dr. Williamson, members of council. What you have before you is a request for a certificate for 211 Basin Street. If you remember correctly, this was on the agenda two weeks ago. Mr. Hammond and I went and met on the site, looked to see what we could do to make it so that what he wants to do with his building meets the design standards, which I feel we did. What he would like to do is he would still like to keep the metal roof, galvanized steel, the color to be charcoal like it was on the last recommendation, and also the front awning. There's a little front awning on that building that would also be metal. I think you should have the picture of what the building looked like the last time. The, all the window trim, door trim, fascian, soffit are to be wrapped in white aluminum. The walls will be painted in ash gray, typical for all four walls. I did attach a color sample. You'll see the ash gray, and you'll see the charcoal for the roof, and this does meet our design standards, and if you have any questions of myself or the owner, he's here or myself.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to approve this certificate?
So moved.
Hearing motion and second. Comments or questions? Mrs. Katz.
Mr. Hammond, where are you? There you are. Thank you very much for coming back, and thank you very much for listening. We appreciate that you're going to improve this building. We really are.
We really are. I'm glad you did this. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? I'm zoned out for about half a second. Make sure I understand, the walls will be painted from ground level to roofline?
Yes.
And then the metal will be on the awning roof and the building roof?
That's correct.
As well as the eaves?
No, the eaves, the soffits, the window trim, everything will be wrapped in a white aluminum because the windows are white.
Okay, all right. I was thinking there were, I missed a part where there was some essentially vertical white, or vertical metal, but that's not true.
Nope, everything is, all the metal will be roof.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Thank you again for working with the city and helping us to be consistent with the laws it stands, so I appreciate that. Mrs. Frank on the certificate.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the certificate is approved. Thanks again. Next item on the agenda is certificate of appropriateness for 228 West Third Street. Mr. Girardi?
Yes, this certificate's for 228 West Third Street. It's a request for a sign. The sign's a non-illuminated sign. The sign will be actually lit from the external lights that are on the building. It's 27 inches tall by 60 inches wide. The sign's mounted flush to the building. It's a composite sign board, and I did attach a drawing of what the sign's going to look like. There's no change in the color. In case you want to know why, you see the sort of like oranges on, that's not the color of the building, that's just the way it came out on the drawing. So really, the only thing you're approving is that 27-inch high by 60-inch wide wall-mounted sign.
Thank you. Is there a motion in a second to approve this certificate?
Go move.
Second.
Here, a motion in a second. Comments or questions? Mrs. Katz.
Is this going on the wall?
Yes, the face of the building. Yeah.
This is right around the corner.
Yes, this is right down, yes.
Right. Looks like a really interesting shop.
Mm-hmm. Yep, I went actually, the gentleman could not attend this evening. He apologized for that. He had something to do out of Williamsport, but it's a little Asian market, very nice inside, and went down, did an occupancy inspection. Hopefully, it'll make out well.
I was thinking, it really did look good.
Yep.
Other comments or questions? It's a shame he wasn't able to make it tonight so we could help him with a little advertisement.
Promotion, yes.
But I did a double take as I was driving by there the other day and saw the temporary sign on the window, and look forward to the chance to get in there and see what kind of unique ingredients they might carry for the market.
He wants to, his intentions down the road a little bit to actually open up a little shop where he can prepare food.
Oh, interesting.
Okay, so, yes.
Very good. If there are no other comments or questions, Mrs. Frank on the certificate.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that certificate is approved. Next item on the agenda is certificate of appropriateness for 151 East Third Street.
Yes, this request is for the John R.T. Ryan Enterprise Building. If you remember correctly, the colors and the look of the building was previously approved back probably three months ago, four months ago, something of that sort. What you're approving tonight, if you turn the sheet, you'll see this little section I have squared off, that's the area of approval. Everything else has been approved for this building. Presently, right now, that's open, and he's going to be infilling that wall. What he's going to be filling it with is, he's going to construct the infill area with wood windows, wood double doors and trim, and if I'm correct, these are the original wood doors that were there at one time. He's going to make it look as if, I mean, as it always was. The colors are exactly what they were before. The walls are lush, trim's going to be vanilla milkshake or the mannequin, is that how you pronounce that?
Mannequin.
Yep. Cream, silvery moon, and then dragon's breath for the accent. And we do have a representative here of the building if you have any questions of myself or him.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion in a second to approve this certificate?
Go move.
Second.
Here, a motion in a second. Comments or questions? The only thing I would add is reiterate what we said a couple months ago. Thank you for continuing what hopefully will be a long line of moves towards economic development in the old city area. It's going to be exciting to see how this building amongst the other properties turn out as things progress. If there are no further comments or questions, Mrs. Frank on the certificate, please.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that certificate is approved. I think Mr. Girardi will come back again for the remainder one for obvious reasons.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we'll move back up the agenda to resolution awarding East Third Street project. Mrs. Frank.
Resolution authorizing the city of Williamsport to award a contract for the Gateway Project.
Thank you. Is there a motion in a second to approve this resolution?
Go move.
Here, a motion in a second. Mr. Nichols, how are you this evening?
My, thank you. Good evening to you and Vice President Allison, members of council. Tonight, I handed out some additional information, which is a follow-up and request from the Finance Committee earlier this week in working with Delta Development. They provided me with a memo to update council on the most current allocation of project costs to grant sources for the Gateway Project. Also, yesterday, the Water and Sanitary Authorities approved the proposed MOU, which defines project responsibilities for certain water and sewer project costs to the Gateway Partners. So including the memo listed are the funding sources as it pertains to the MOU, as well as funding for the various SOF costs related to the project. So if you compare this memo to the source of news sheet, it doesn't entirely match up because the memo shows you the related funding sources for what is being awarded tonight, which does not utilize all the available funds that have been awarded to us, so that means that there are still available funds from state and local sources for contingencies. I also provide you with the Larson Design Group bid tabulation sheet as well as the bid proposal submitted by Haw Baker. Last meeting, we did have a presentation for the team members. Chris Kaiser is back here tonight, if you have any questions, as well as Dave Whitman from Reynolds, and so we're asking for your favorable consideration.
Thank you, and this was reviewed by Finance, I believe?
It was reviewed by Finance.
Mr. Allison, please.
I didn't get a chance to look at this memo yet, Bill. Is there anything?
I can, yeah, I can point out little changes if you want.
Yeah, would you do that first, please?
Sure. The first line item, East Third Street reconstruction, that's the same. That is 100% from the reimbursement agreement we have with PennDOT. The traffic signals based on Mulberry Streets, that's from a Green Light Go grant. That remains the same, as well as the local funding sources of the city and First Community Foundation. The East Third Street streetscape, that is essentially the same as well, but you'll note on the source of news sheet, and I think there was a little confusion, is that there's more funds available yet from that grant, that we're still identifying how much more we can allocate to that grant, so that doesn't perfectly line up, and I think Liz had a question about that, and I didn't quite have the answer at that point in time. Franklin Basin Street, that as well is pretty much the same as before. What is new, water and sewer improvements? We had some questions about that, you know, what if the MOU was not approved by the Water and Sanitary Authority? How would we fund that? But they did, as I understand it, and the funding sources for that are listed there from the Water and Sanitary Authority, as well as a small amount of money from the multimodal grant, as well as the remainder split between the city and Lakomin Economic Development Foundation. One thing that was changed, will change on the source of news sheet, is the amount of money that, the money for the water and sanitary dollars from the city were previously listed for the ARC grant, and we do not need that match. That's being funded through the Arley Grant, so we changed that from the 240 that's listed there, and we're going to be allocating 150 to the water and sanitary improvements. And also in addition, the...
Can you explain that piece just again for me with a little?
The MOU or?
No, 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 just the funding of the city's component of the water and sewer improvements. I followed you, but I didn't follow you 100%.
Sure.
Yeah.
We have bond monies available for East Third Street, which we really didn't tie down as to which grant source we wanted to utilize that.
Sure.
But we felt that a proper allocation would be towards the water and sewer improvements to match the Lakomin Economic Development Foundation dollars, simply because instead of using it to match the ARC grant, we don't have to do that, so we're allocating it from what was initially listed under the Pine Street Project, which is funded by the ARC Grant.
Okay.
Again, you've got to keep in mind, the source of news fund sheet has been, is very dynamic. It evolves all the time, and again, Liz wanted to be sure there was significant contingency money available going forward with this project, and there's about at least a half a million dollars of contingency money that we have in place as we move forward for the Gateway Project, so we're in pretty good shape there, especially with the, you know, the water and sanitary MOU that was approved. That needs to come before council, obviously. You have a draft of that in your binder, so the intent was to bring that to you the next meeting.
And given that we do have that, there may be a couple of questions about that after you finish your, through the course of this review.
Right. We did review this. The majority, vast majority of the time we spent looking at it was this last item, the water and sewer improvements, and specifically the city's involvement, and also the MOU. The newspaper article said the Water Authority approved up to 560,000. Is that correct? Is that, you have 500 here, is that just a holding number, or is that 60,000?
The total amount in the bid for everything related to that aspect of is $899,000. And this was, a lot of time went into trying to determine a fair allocation of how this was to be funded. Essentially, what happened was since this became, we moved this project up to complete the Third Street and base in Franklin Street with the Gateway College, certain costs then would not be reimbursed by PennDOT, especially to the Water and Sanitary Authority. For example, up on Fourth Street, PennDOT will pay 70% of the water and sanitary costs because it's their project. If it becomes a local project, then those dollars are not available. So, and discussing this with the Water and Sanitary Authority, it was felt that, you know, the grant funds that we're able to get for this, some of those should be allocated to, you know, all aspects of the project. So they accepted the fact that they had to pay at least 30% of the cost of the water and sanitary improvements, and then Lakomin College and the city would come up with a way in percentage-wise to look at the remainder, and essentially, the remainder is split in three ways after you apply the 30%, so that's sort of how we came up with those Also, the 500,000 includes an issue about the laterals. The cost of the water and sanitary improvements were $416,000 excluding the laterals. They want to replace all the laterals, so that's, they did commit the 500,000, so that would include $85,000 for all kinds of lateral work. Now, if there's more than that, then the way that would be funded is if the lateral needs to be replaced because it's in bad shape, then that would be their cost. If they just want to replace it, to replace it, then they would have to, then, or if we desire to replace it, then we would help participate in that cost. So it's sort of on a case-by-case basis, I guess, because we don't want them digging up the street shortly after we reconstruct the street, so it comes into relying to codes department and other inspectors to try to determine whether or not a lateral needs to be replaced.
Well, okay, regarding that, the lateral issue, if I recall correctly, the way we, the conversation we had about it was that if they wanted to replace it and it didn't meet PennDOT specifications
Right.
for being replaced, it didn't reach a level that PennDOT would say it needed to be replaced, then that was on their dime.
Correct.
Otherwise, the other formula.
If, yeah, if it was in such disrepair that it would have been replaced by PennDOT, then we would then share in that cost. I'm sure I explained that very well, but I'm doing my best.
So if it's bad enough, then we would share in that cost.
Right. Simply because we don't want them tearing up the street two years later, you know, if it's in bad shape.
Exactly. And that there's going to be, who's going to arbitrate that? Can you remind me about that again? The person that's going to?
Well, we turned it, we initially talked about arbitrating that.
Yeah.
But now with the aspect of would PennDOT replace it, that would be the defining decision.
Right, but you...
So we would ask a PennDOT, we have to have a PennDOT inspector on the job because it is a state road, so we would rely on the PennDOT inspector to make that determination.
Okay, I thought you mentioned an individual in our meeting that was...
Well, now that it's, we're using PennDOT as the threshold.
Okay.
We would rather use somebody, you know, that's a PennDOT qualified inspector that we have on the job.
So then back to the 500,000. It said 560 in the paper, is that?
That's if the estimate that the Water Authority had for replacing all the laterals, that would be the total cost then.
560.
To the Water Authority, if they replaced them all themselves.
Okay, that would cover the whole project.
Yes.
Their share, 560, okay.
Obviously, we would, I think, strongly ask them to cover the whole cost so that we wouldn't have to allocate anything towards laterals because, you know, frankly, I think that that would be appropriate, but again, we'll see when we dig everything up what it looks like. And again, I'll rely on the city's engineer and others, you know, that won't be my responsibility. I'll use the experts to make that determination.
Right. And the ARC grant that we don't have to match now?
Well, we do have to match it, but since the ARC grant is a federal grant and the Arley Grant is a state grant, we can utilize those funds to match, so, because the Pine Street...
Well, we're matching it with some other funds rather than?
Yeah, we can use the Arley Grant funds, and Arley is for traffic signals, which are part of the Pine Street Project, so we can use those funds to match the federal funds, which does the majority of the Pine Street Project.
So we're able to, okay, that works.
You can't match federal to federal, but as long as you match federal with something else, local, and state is determined to be local when you're talking about federal match.
Okay, and so that frees up, what was the matching percentage that we had to match?
For the ARC grant?
Yeah.
70/30?
70/30, okay. It's not listed on this.
I think it's in the, it should be in the grant that I put in the binder.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure it's 70/30, is that?
Yes.
That correct?
Yep.
That's correct.
And that was the major question, where our, what our portion was going to be and where it was going to come from, so that 175,000 is coming from the LEDF grant.
Yes, that is correct.
We're clearing that, okay.
And why, and that's coming out of, if you look at the, we had, if you look at the source for the LED and where that's on the source of news sheet.
Okay, yep.
If you look, if you look at the, if you look at the first line item, East Third Street, and over under LEDF, we had allocated 240,770 towards that, so we're using 175. That's why I'm saying there's little dollars here and there, again, we try to have contingency dollars at each aspect of the project. I mean, with 10 different grant sources and different parts of the project, it's sort of difficult to match. I mean, with ten different grant sources and, and different parts of the project, it's, it's, it's sort of, um, difficult to match everything up. But again, we, we met with Delta, um, Chris was involved and trying to update this. And, and I can assure you that the Gateway memo really, um, is solid in terms of, um, you know, how we're allocating the, the different costs. Obviously, the grant funds are in place and we have a little bit of discretion with the local funds that we have. Uh, we have about two million dollars in local funds from the various foundations and other sources. So, um, you know, I, I, these decisions are made by our team pretty much to best distribute the funds that we have. And based on going back to the strategies we have in place from Thomas Point to other studies. And so, we try not to deviate from what we just wanted to do early on and where certain sources wanted dollars to be allocated. So, um, and again, we have about a half a million dollars in contingency money, which I think Liz wanted to get some sort of a grasp on, on that. So, so I, I mean, I'll help, I mean, I'll, I'll update this.
Okay, great.
And make a report to finance if you desire every month on where we are. I think that might make sense.
That would be good.
Because I, I'd rather have some other eyes look at it as well.
And just a general question then, you mentioned, um, and I forget which, uh, grant fund you mentioned. You were, uh, that there was, we weren't fully spending it, so you could, you found a way to use it. How much?
For example, if you look at the, uh, um, the first column on the Source and Use sheet, the twenty sixteen CFA multimodal seventy thirty, there's about seventy-five thousand dollars available yet still. Under the PennDOT multimodal twenty eighteen seventy thirty, um, there's about a hundred fifty thousand dollars there. Under the LEDF, uh, the local, about twenty-five thousand, Lehigh County seventy-five, the city fifty. I could be missing something. Some of the other grant sources, I know there's, there's some dollars there, but.
Okay.
That sort of gives you where, where we're thinking.
That answered a question I had when I was matching up the grant amounts to what we're spending on this project. There were some leftover dollars in there, so.
So, I'll, we'll update this, uh, and Delta, and I'll, I'll make sure they come up, at least corollary to give you an update on this.
Okay.
And they're, they're updating strategy if necessary, but, but I think we're, we're in pretty good shape going forward at this point. So, but there's still other parts of this project that haven't been even fully designed yet, let alone bid. So, you know, we still have a long ways to go. This just gets us started with East Third and Basin and Franklin.
Okay. Um, that was the main issue, so, um, I think, to my understanding, it's been answered, the questions we had in finance and that we covered there on this project.
Thank you. Um, are there other comments or questions for members of council? Mr. Schlotter.
So, the, the Arley grant money is being used as a match. What's happening, so how much of the Arley money is going to the, as for the match?
The whole amount.
So that's.
The two thirty, six seventy-six, reallocating the whole amount. It may be an overmatch position, but reallocating the whole grant because that's, that's for, um, it's part of the Pine Street project, that's the intersection of Third and Pine. Redoing that intersection and the, the signal.
And, so the, so I'm just trying to, obviously, this has all changed in the last few days. As with Councilman Allison, I'm just trying to sort it all out here.
Mm-hmm.
So, the one seventy, so the hundred seventy-five thousand from the city, can you just explain that one more time for me, please?
The, um, well, the total amount of money that was made available for that project a few years ago was five hundred thousand dollars. And, uh, the hundred seventy-five, if you look at the memo, um, uh, is being allocated to the Water and Sewer Improvements. And that was finally, uh, finalized, I guess you can say, yesterday, um, with the Water and Sanitary Authority committing five hundred thousand dollars, which left a balance of, um, of, uh, the difference would be the three ninety-nine, three seventy-four. And again, the, the determination of, of the amount above the five hundred thousand was based on that, in a typical PennDOT project, they would have to pay thirty percent of that project. And then without the seventy percent coming from PennDOT, um, um, through the, probably over the last year, the discussion was how best to fund the remainder residual, once the numbers were known, was that the major stakeholders would, uh, split it, um, by a certain formula. So, um, the determination, we ended up with, um, we were able to get a little bit of money from PennDOT, towards that, forty-nine thousand, three seventy-four. And then we split the remainder between the City Williamsport and Lehigh County Economic Development Foundation, which provided us a very generous grant towards matcher, whatever purpose we needed for the project.
So then that, that's where the extra is coming from for the LEDF then?
Yes.
Because that was originally.
Yeah, that, that's coming out of the, the, um, again, the original allocation we made towards Third Street from them was two hundred and forty thousand, seven seventy. And, um, we're not using all that, so, um.
So that extra money is going where?
Uh, between the, the one, uh, the one seventy-five, the two forty? That's in reserve right now, it's contingency, so. Again, that's why we'll need to come back at least every month to give council an update as to any further allocations of dollars. So, those decisions can be made accordingly.
So, all of these reallocations, I mean, this has changed significantly since Tuesday, when it was reviewed at finance, or not?
No, the only thing that changed was the, the, um, Water Authority one that had a substantive change. Others were just very minor, if, if any, I, I don't think, I don't know. I think Chris, I don't know, the Water Authority was really the major one. The Water Authority was really the one we had to deal with because we didn't know if the Water Authority was going to approve the half a million dollars. So, there was three things that I think brought in the Water Authority. And then there was, and we, I, we found out there was something on a page, it looked like it came from Delta, but that, it came from Larson Design, which it did, and those were notes by, um, Delta Development, not Larson. And they were soft costs, so that's why I had a soft cost in here to reconcile with what we discussed on Tuesday. And the other thing was the difference between allocations and what's on the Source and Use. And again, Source and Use provides you with all the money, dollars that are available. And the memo provides you how we're allocating those to what we're asking for tonight as an award.
Mr. Schlotter.
I was just asking, I was, had a question about the M O U, uh, between whether or not our finance committee had seen that M O U, the new version that they approved yesterday, and, uh, what.
I haven't, I just saw something, I haven't seen it.
Right, so nobody has seen this M O U, but we're supposed to vote on it tonight?
No, we're not voting. You mean the M O U with the Water Authority?
Yes.
No, we're not voting on that.
So we're just, but we haven't seen this M O U at all.
It, we saw a draft of it.
The draft of it, that's in here.
But we don't know if it's changed.
Right, that's just.
The only thing, the, the five hundred thousand dollars is still the same. It's only relates to the, I think the changes were, there were two number sevens and, uh, the, um, description of how the, um, cost sharing will be determined to the laterals.
But we can't be sure that the M O U that we have in here is draft is what they voted on yesterday.
Right, he just said, there was one minor change, but one that would have some significance.
Wordsmithing done, but, but the dollars remained the same.
But we're not voting on them.
Right, no, right, I get that, but.
Okay. Uh, other comments or questions? Mr. Nichols, following up on that M O U, which I, I know we're not voting on, but it helps inform the big picture. The, the max exposure in the draft that we had to the Water Authority is clarified. It's clear, it's going to be five hundred thousand dollars, um, which is four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in the base bid, plus their share up to that limit of the lateral.
Plus they're, they're, they're paying for the laterals up to five hundred thousand dollars. And then if there's any additional lateral work needed, then, you know, it's determined.
Right.
We, we have a say in whether or not we want to sponsor that or not.
Okay, and so that, that was the part I wanted to read and, or, or get clarified. In the draft that we have, and it may have changed a little bit, but not substantively, it sounds like. Our, the city's contribution, not, and, and I'll get to the funding again, to, but the contribution that we had to find funding for, uh, was three hundred sixty-four thousand dollars and change. And any excess money above the authority's five hundred thousand dollars, and the only place that could come from is the laterals, correct? The any, there's no cost to the Water and Sewer that could be in excess of, of our three sixty-four, except the laterals.
The eight ninety-nine, three seventy-four and our Florida Reynolds is the number that we're bid, is that correct?
And so the lateral is the only unknown number. And the estimate for the cap on the laterals is, uh, if everything has to be replaced, is about a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars.
That's correct.
And they have committed, unless there's been changes, I'm, I'm rap, trying to wrap around, around my mind around our exposure.
Right.
So, they've said, all right, we're paying four sixteen and whatever's left over in laterals, which is about eighty-five thousand, eighty-four thousand they'll pay for. The max exposure to any of us is a hundred and forty-three thousand. So, eight, a hundred and forty-three minus, um, eighty-five-ish is about sixty thousand. So, our max exposure then would be three sixty-four for the base bid, plus sixty-five thousand, or sixty thousand, if, if we have to pay for our full share of the lateral.
Well, no, split in half, it would be our maximum exposure, about fifty, yeah.
About sixty thousand.
But that would be split if there, if we were going to agree to that, we would each pay approximately half, so our exposure would only be thirty.
But that's not anticipated, that, what you just said, that little sentence is not anticipated in our draft, or unless I missed.
Shows the percentage, fifty-three percent and the forty-seven percent.
But once they've hit their cap, then we are taking on everything above the cap, right? Regardless of the percentage.
No, there would still be a cost sharing, for anything above their cap, there, there would be subject to cost sharing arrangement. We would not take anything on a hundred percent.
I'm.
If you read it differently, I'll look at it.
Yeah, I'm, I, let me read it because I, I don't understand it that way, and I might be reading it wrong. And I, I'm fine if I am. Um, the authority will contribute, here, the Water Authority will contribute fifty-three and one-third percent of the project cost, which includes the laterals and everything else, um, in an amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars, and which are anticipated as being four hundred and sixteen thousand and change, in addition to the lateral cost, talked about later, which may be necessary is determined as part of the construction up to the limit set forth herein.
Right.
The city will be contributing the forty-six and two-thirds percent, um, which are estimated at three hundred sixty-four thousand, and any excess monies due of the authority's portion that may exceed five hundred thousand. Lateral prices are anticipated as of the signing of this agreement are approximately a hundred and forty-three thousand if all anticipated laterals are installed. Lateral costs above the anticipated amount shall be subject, and maybe this is where I misunderstood what you're saying now. And shall be subject to paragraph five change orders provisioned set forth herein.
Which is the percentage.
Which I'll get down to that one. The cost sharing arrangements set forth above are contingent upon receiving and awarding a bid, which was been done. And in the event of any change orders, the party shall pay such amounts according to the percentages set forth in three A and three B. But that still means they're capped and, and we pay anything above their cap.
And, no, because if we don't desire to have the laterals replaced, then we're not going to incur any costs.
Okay, um, but the, uh, the, the maximum exposure we could have, and, and I, I'm okay if we can define what this is, um, even if we don't anticipate it ever getting there, is three sixty-four plus about sixty, so four twenty. Now, I want to go to your memo to make sure I understand this side. So, uh, under Water and Sewer Improvements, they're paying five hundred thousand, um, the PennDOT is paying about fifty thousand. So, basically, as I understand it, what are, the total cost of everything could be is eight ninety-nine plus one forty-three. If everything has to get paid for by somebody, right? Eight ninety-nine for the base bid plus one forty-three for maximum.
Yes.
I'm seeing some nodding of heads.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so, i- if we take that eight nine nine nine, four, one forty-three, we're at one point four two million, right? Half a million is being paid for, um, by the Water and Sewer Authority, so now we're at, uh, five hundred and forty-two thousand. Three hundred and fifty thousand is being paid for either by the city or the Development Foundation. So, five forty minus three fifty is two hundred thousand, two, a hundred ninety thousand? Am I, is somebody keeping up with my math?
Five forty minus.
Three fifty.
Two ninety?
Yeah. One ninety, one ninety. And then about fifty thousand, I didn't keep up with my own math now that I, I should have write it, written it down. Eight ninety, sorry to take this time, I.
No, it's.
Yeah, I, I just want to wrap my mind around it, and I'm assuming others do as well. So, eight ninety-nine plus one forty-three is, uh, one million forty-two thousand. If you take our half million, or, I'm sorry, the Water Authority's half million, the city's a hundred and seventy-five thousand, and the Economic Development Foundation's a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Then, and the PennDOT's money, you're looking at nine hundred thousand or, or it's eight ninety-nine. So we're back to the one forty-three. If everything has to be paid for, what funds the one forty-three? Given that the Water Authority's commitment will have been reached.
Well, again, our contingency dollars, if we, if we truly dig into those laterals, then we'd have to get into the contingency money if there was a shortfall.
And all of the sources of the contingency money, which you went through very well with Mr. Allison, um, come from a lot of different funding sources. Would the lateral expenditures be eligible expenses for enough of those, um, contingencies to be able to cover that cost?
Yeah, there's enough local dollars available to do that.
Okay.
If you take the L, the LEDF, Lehigh County, um, and the residual from the city, and possibly more from PennDOT grant source, I don't know.
But, but there is enough money, local match money available to cover as much as a hundred and forty-three, and we'll hope that it ends up being sixty thousand or something.
That would be, that was what we hope.
Okay. Did that help everybody else?
I have a question on that.
Yeah, Mr. Allison.
I, I thought we talked about that that was going to be covered by, uh, engineering costs, a match.
Match for which part?
That we had traded with Lehigh County College?
Oh, that, well, that's, if you look at the, um, Lehigh County College paid, um, a hundred seventy-five, well, a hundred seventy-two thousand nine eleven for design costs for Franklin Basin Street, which we were to reimburse them. So, instead of reimbursing them, we're utilizing, because it was a joint grant from Lehigh County Economic Development Foundation, we said, instead of getting to reimbursement situation, we'll just, we will not reimburse Lehigh County College for anything. They paid the entire nickel for design of Ba- Basin and Franklin Street, and we'll use the other local sources for that, for their part of the match. Because they paid it through the design costs, if you follow what I'm saying, they have paid 175,000.
Yeah, I did, but I thought.
That was a request from the college, so.
I thought you had related that to this project, the, that was going to.
Yeah, it is, that is, that's why I listed, I added the soft costs down below, where, again, Chris can verify that, that Larson had a contract with the college and engaged them to design Franklin Basin Street. So, they invested about $175,000 in, to the project. And so, we used other local sources, because we wanted them to contribute towards the water and sanitary work as well. So, they agreed to pay the design costs in lieu of contributing towards the water and sanitary.
So, to make sure I understand that one, if we had paid for the Franklin Basin design cost, we would see Lycoming College's name next to Water and Sewer Improvement?
Correct, yes. Follow that.
Mr. Allison.
I'm, no, I'm thinking.
Yeah, no, I just, okay, we can come back, Mrs. Katz.
Didn't you say that RVT, the engineering costs are going to come out of RVT?
For which part?
I don't, this was part of my notes from finance, RVT.
Well, the professional fees, that's for all of, that's for, we paid all, 90% of Delta Development's costs, which has been well over 150, actually, at this point, so, as you recall, that was, we agreed to assume that responsibility of that annual or monthly contract with them, to get these grants. So, all that was picked up by RVT.
Clarify that, the other thing, we talk about the laterals all the time. You said, so be it if the cause, if we don't do the laterals, okay? But, from what we understand, when we were studying with stormwater and everything, we don't know how bad are all our laterals are.
We don't know.
And what might happen is, those laterals may collapse, and we'd have to dig up those streets anyhow. And that's, I find that kind of frustrating, if we're not going to do everything now, to find the money to do this.
Again, that was, everybody wanted to make provisions for replacing the laterals, in case they need replaced.
Right.
And I agree with that, I mean, yeah.
I don't want to.
But it's an unknown, so.
It's an unknown throughout the city, but if we're going to do this whole project, and we're going to do reconfigure, and we're going to have brand-new streets, we're going to have brand-new so many other things, and then all of a sudden, things start collapsing, then you're going to be digging up brand-new streets.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We don't know, this is an unknown factor until, is anybody going to, can I ask Larson Design if they know, are we going to, are we going to scope any of the laterals to find out how bad they are?
That's not part of, outside of the project zone, that's not part of our.
Would that not behoove us to know what?
We're utilizing guides from the water authority, water sanitary authority on which ones to replace. The laterals within Third Street, there's roughly 25 to 30, I think, that would be replaced. But outside of doing additional scoping to look at beyond the project zone.
It's kind of, to me, frustrating and kind of scary, that this could be let go if we don't have the money right now.
As I understand it, though, each one of them will be inspected externally, if not internally, because the road will be dug up, i.e. within the project area.
He's saying no.
Well, let me, well, he said, I think there was a missing word, and maybe we can get him for the microphone. Mr. Kaiser.
I think we need to clarify this lateral thing, because.
Yeah.
That's included in the 899, so, as far as.
If I could just make a comment, by the way, Dave, from Reynolds. As you all know, this is a fairly huge project, there's a lot of unknowns, and I can tell you that the due diligence was done by PennDOT, by PennDOT's engineering firm, Dewberry, by Larson Design, and we've estimated as best we could. But obviously, you're digging up 100-year-old streets, 100-year-old water lines, and the laterals. There are some unknowns, and Bill alluded to that there are some contingencies in each funds that we can use if needed. And I'm not saying that we have everything covered 100%, because it's hard to do.
I just don't want it ignored, I want the job done.
Well, we did the best engineering that could have been done, and we estimated as best as we could. And the lateral should be covered. Now, the other thing is, you know, the future development as well, we try to look ahead at that as well, and there is some money in to do some laterals, but not every one or every future development is considered. Now, there is a chance that we can estimate where a future voting would be, or who knows what will happen in the future.
While you're, before you sit down, if I could follow up with your question, the 899 base bid, again, the MOU may have changed a little bit here, but the 899 calculations are pretty well-covered in the MOU, and I'm not even sure if you're aware of the contents of the MOU. So, and then it anticipates, it's unclear then, based on what Mr. Nichols just said, is the 143,000 a part of the 899, or in addition to the 899?
I think it's in the 899. Now, there's, I don't have that information in front of me, and I apologize, but there was a set number of laterals that were going to be replaced, and that's the question.
Because, you know, part one of it says, project costs are covered by the authority are anticipated as being 416, in addition to lateral costs highlighted on Exhibit A, but we don't have Exhibit A yet.
I didn't have that either.
And then, in the third paragraph, a section of that paragraph, it says, lateral prices are anticipated at approximately 1/3, 43, but it doesn't say there about Exhibit A, so it's unclear if that piece C connects to the ones that are in addition to, or, as, in other words, is the 143 part of 899, or is it more than 899 possible? Let me see if he has any additional thoughts on that question real quick.
So, it was, it was bid with, and again, the design firm that bid Third Street was Dewberry, which was PennDOT's contractor. So, they made their best guess for laterals, and that's, you know, you're going to have unforeseen conditions and additional laterals that are discovered, or what have you, so.
And I think we may have just.
But this is, this is close, this is about the best guess, and out of the 899, that was the best guess to the water authority, what could be attributed to laterals.
I think Ms. Mealy just helped me figure out much of what we've been struggling with. If you take 416 and 364 and 143, it is 899.
No, it is not 899.
No, it's not 899.
It is 909, 15-ish.
Okay.
Nine, probably 925, I'm sorry.
But closer to the.
It's close to 899.
899 that we talked about, which then circles back to what Mr. Nichols was saying, that, that you do proportion out the 143, or almost all of the 143, to get to 500,000 for the authority. But still, I was right in my rough calculations to say, we're looking at an exposure of something in addition to 364, up to about 420 or so, 425, somewhere in that range. So, that, to my questions earlier, which is, what's our exposure? We can absolutely hope that 36, it's closer to 363, 364 than 420, but that's the range of what we're committing to. Of that, then, 175 would come from the city, 175 would come from the Development Authority, 49 would come from PennDOT, which is about 400 of the 420. So, our unfunded exposure, the things that we were worried about that might be covered by contingency funds, is only about 20 or 30,000, still a significant number, but not nearly the variation that we were worried about, you know, five or 10 minutes ago.
Can you go back, excuse me for a second, because I'm late.
Sure.
Can you go back over with me the source of the funds that you just talked about?
There's a memo.
There's a memo in your place, yep. So, that helps me with my questions, I think also Mr. Slaughter and Mrs. Katz's questions. But I'll leave it to them to clarify in their minds. Yeah, right, sure, which should be in a couple weeks. Further comments or questions, then, Ms. Mealy?
Okay, so the 899, I'm just looking, so the MTF with District 3, we have confirmation that we have the 49, that we can use the grant funding for, toward the water authority?
Yes, between Tuesday and today, because we have some residual funds and some of the grant sources, they'll check with PennDOT, and so we can cover some of that sanitary and water aspect of the project through some funds in the multimodal grant, not an enormous amount, but some.
Okay, so, yeah, we had, we had about 250,000, and we can use 49 of that?
Yeah, in the, we figured out.
There are several MTF grants too.
Yeah, we have 75,000 in the CFA, 172 in the MTF, that's about 250, as you said. And out of the CFA grant, we're hoping to allocate, you know, some of that towards water and sewer.
We have 75,000 in the CFA grant.
Right.
Hold on, help me to understand where that extra money came from.
That's what I was trying to explain, you were looking at, that thing you were looking at was not from Larson Design Group, that was from actually Teresa's worksheet, where she was trying to figure out how to utilize all the funds that we were granted. And at this point, again, the Source and Use sheet shows what's been approved, and the Gateway memo that we worked on since Tuesday was to show you exactly what funds are being used for the award tonight, and that was sort of based on what you wanted to see.
What I'm confused about is where the 75,000 from the CFA grant is coming in, because I'm showing.
There's also the CFA grant.
Okay, so which CFA grant is it, but we haven't even spent that one yet.
Not the CFA, the PennDOT.
So, the PennDOT has 172, you said, but then you said there was 75 in what grant?
CFA, the first line, first column, I'm sorry.
The 70, but I'm showing that as being fully spent on this East Third Street, Streetscape stuff, in every, across every.
In the Gateway memo?
Yeah, well, on every platform.
Right.
Somehow.
But I am showing there is being about 250,000 of extra money in the PennDOT MTF.
Maybe that, when the PennDOT MTF, that could be, you could be right on that, because we're only using, let's see. Yes, you're right, the 900, yeah, we're only using 926,772, that's what we wanted to narrow down. So, that's different from, again, the Source and Use sheet's the total amount available, and you're right, we're only using 926,772 of that.
Of which one?
Is that the second column?
Yes.
Okay, got it, and that's enough money?
The 175.
The Pine Street, sorry, I'm just, I'm trying to understand, okay. So, the city has 175,000 coming out of the match for the art grant and the Arley grant, correct?
The Arley grant.
Our 175 that we have in the kitty, that was my next question, anyway. So, we have about 250,000 extra on the PennDOT MTF grant, and of that, we can use almost 50,000 for water work.
Yeah, we can only use a small portion of that.
Okay.
Because the, that grant is for Basin and Franklin, and so the water and sanitary work that's actually in Basin Street is how we came up with that number.
Got it, okay, that works. And then, the City of Williamsburg, 175,000 is coming out of this 240 match for the work on Pine Street?
Yeah, the Arley grant can be used to match the art grant.
Got it, and that's.
And the Arley grant is that traffic light signal revenue from Philadelphia or something?
Yeah, and have, we know that that'll be adequate funding, obviously, for the project.
We have those dollars.
We have, so we've bid that out, and we've gotten the numbers?
No, we haven't bid that out yet.
Okay.
That still hasn't been designed, so, you know, that's, again, a lot of this could still continue to change, because, you know, we.
Got it, so what you're saying is.
The numbers we wanted to get, as you, I think, wanted on Tuesday, is you want to get the certain numbers that we're using for this first.
Yeah, I wanted to understand the water and sewer.
And then, so some of the others may change, because we still have to go through design and other things, so.
Got it.
We wanted to get solid numbers for which, how we're allocating the dollars for this part of the project.
Got it, so anyway, we don't need those matched dollars, even though we might need extra monies for that project whenever it does get designed and bid.
We don't need which.
We don't need the money for a match, even though it's possible that we would need more money when the project does get designed and bid.
There's still about.
Again, I'm trying to understand our sort of exposure and ability to complete the entire package, if we're using some of the funds going toward the water authority element, instead of, you know what I mean? I mean, I understand that these are our best guess estimates of what it might cost to do the work on Pine Street, but I'm, you know, I'm just trying to, we've got a huge scope of work outlined here, and I'm trying to understand where we might fall short if we're putting this money toward.
But we never anticipated getting, using that as match for the art grant. I mean, again, this is going to change every step of the way, because you still have four or five elements of this to go, and.
Got it, okay, but sounds good. And then, as you indicated, just to be on the record, if for some reason we were to hit some sort of issue with some of the work outlined in that 899, that we are authorizing as part of the total $5,284,000 contract with Glenn Hawbaker, then we would be able to back out the work, even though we've authorized the full amount of spending. Even though these items aren't a change order, even though we're accepting the full bid, we will be able to, if we can't come to an agreement with the water authority, which I'm assuming, did they vote in the affirmative? Okay, on the agreement, right, right. But, even if, you see what I'm saying? We would, we would be able to back out the spending if we absolutely had to.
Well, I mean, this particular project, we have, you know, with the grant money still available as a contingency in the MTF, PennDOT, and CFA grant, and the other local source, we have a half million dollars that's still available.
Okay, but I'm just saying, if we needed to reduce the scope of the project, despite the fact that we're authorizing it today, we would still be able to do that.
Change orders, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, got it, but that's really the final assurance, I think, I need, just because we, we have, we have, what are we looking at? 350, or close to 400,000 for our possible exposure of 425.
We eliminate all the water and sanitary work, you know, if we wanted to.
I don't think anybody wants to do that, and that's not part of the question. I'm just trying to make sure, when we authorize a $5 million tab, this work is happening in 2020, and we all know that. And so, it's not, it's not first up, but so, if something were to happen, if something were to change, we are able to make a change order if we would need to, so.
Well, and I think you should get them to you once a month at the Finance Committee, because frankly, this is very overwhelming.
It's a lot, well, I can tell Mr. Nichols, especially for, I can only imagine how much work this is for you, given the binder we've got full of material here. But, anyway, thank you, I appreciate you catching me, bringing me up to speed there.
Thank you, any other comments, questions on the resolution? And I'll remind myself that we're looking at the resolution wording, East Third Street Gateway Project. Mr. Allison.
I guess, going forward, would, would we be able to, or do you have?
I know I do.
A chart or document of how these grants and everything cross-relate? Or is that something you just work on as you come to, in other words, so we had an understanding which, which ones are being affected going forward? Maybe things we could look at or anticipate?
I definitely want to update the. I definitely want to update the Source and Use sheet, and I can break down, maybe in some sort of a sub-matrix, the match requirements?
Yeah.
And where it's coming from. Yeah, the more, yeah, that's, so, you know, there's still room in the binder, so the more information I get, it's fine by me.
There's not much more room in the binder, Mr. Nichols, just to be clear.
Toby, just let us know when the binder gets bigger than the college's binder.
Yeah, so, yeah, I can, let me, let me, get, get our team together to update the Source and Use with the knowns that we've been going over and provide you tonight.
Right.
With the match and, you know, maybe keep a running total of contingency dollars.
Yeah.
I think probably would be helpful.
It would be, I think we'd all appreciate that, and I think, there was a, well, it's somewhere in here. I think there was a timeline chart through the project.
Well, the, again, the first phase of this is Basin and Franklin.
Right.
Hopefully completed, originally it was contemplated being completed for Little League World Series, but I don't think that that's a reality, but it'll definitely this year. And then the Third Street part of the project would be next year, and definitely before Little League, because that would have, I think, an impact on traffic. And in one of your tabs, there's a road closure map, if that's of interest. Basically, it says, don't go in there anywhere. Now, you want to talk about timeline, or Chris, I don't, do you have any updated information?
I mean, I guarantee you they're gonna, I know Ms. Mealy said it won't be until 2020, but they'll likely start, I mean, as soon as they're, as soon as they're given a notice to proceed, they're gonna start, and like Bill said, work on Franklin and Basin Street first, because that's kind of key to getting a gateway point connection made.
Right.
And also, a big component is ordering the signals. Those signals take a while.
My, my, my point wasn't that none of the work was being done until 2020. My point was that the water and sewer work under Third Street isn't happening until 2020, was what Mr. Nichols had mentioned.
The intersection, the intersection's on Third, Third Street, and then it's on First, Third, and Fourth, will be Basin and Franklin.
Oh, okay, good.
Moving east of that, excuse me, moving west of the intersection, that, that work will be 2020.
Okay, moving, okay, Third and Franklin, moving west, sorry, I'm just trying to picture my-
On Third Street-
Yep.
From the intersection, that'll be done initially, intersection.
Okay.
West of the intersection will be done in 2020, on Third Street.
Yeah, so from, so from the intersection at Basin, everything east of Basin Street will be done, but west of Basin won't? Or west of Franklin, sorry?
Just the intersection.
Oh, just the intersection will be done, so everything to either side?
Maybe I'll go twenty feet east on Third Street, past the intersection.
Got it, okay.
And I could just say one other thing, as, as scheduled right now, the road closure detour map is scheduled to be placed in May fifteenth. Now hopefully, hopefully, I can get their paperwork, the notice to proceed is ready to go, they're already essential by tomorrow, gets approved tonight, but we can get it forward, but I think their most instruction is around May fifteenth.
I, I believe the college is graduating on May twelfth, so it probably would be wise for us to avoid anything before that, anyway.
What a coincidence.
That would be really unfortunate for access to campus. Anyway, thank you very much for the extra, for the additional Spanish.
Other comments or questions, Mr. Slaughter?
Yes, to follow up with Councilman Allison, I think it would be extremely helpful if we saw an accurate listing of the grants, what has switched, the allocations, the matches, et cetera. I think that's essentially what you were, I just want to say that, that would be very helpful for me as well.
Yeah.
Clearly, because there's been, you know, a decent amount of changes from, you know, moving around from what this original matrix shows, so I think an accurate depiction of what we're currently funding the matches, et cetera, the grants, and then what's going into contingencies, and where, and how much, and, you know, how that all shakes out accurately on this matrix, and then whether it's a sub-matrix or however you want to, you know, develop that, but I think that would be extremely helpful, as we're looking at this.
And I, and I think the monthly schedule that Mr. Nichols suggested, I also agree that that's, that's a good timeframe, right? There's gonna probably be changing numbers on a weekly basis, or, or if not more often, but if, if we can have, you know, a copy of the Source and Use and whatever you build to go along with that update on a monthly basis, especially in, in the years where we're doing bidding, or in the months where we're doing bidding and letting bids, and actually expending funds, that would be particularly useful.
Absolutely, because, well, seventeen grant sources and tying it all together is, if we can get a template that everybody can easily follow, I think it'd be helpful for everybody, including myself, so.
And just as a request, if each and every one of them can be dated, then, then Will can know-
Well, believe it or not, the last one was April fifth, so-
Yeah, it's only, what, three weeks old, and, and a lot has changed in three weeks.
And once the construction starts, we will do a monthly construction report that'll show you contingency fund, change orders, proposed change orders, cost logs, so you'll have that one.
Great, thank you. Mr. Slaughter, is that everything for you? Any other comments, Ms. Katz, no, anything down there? Hearing done then, Mrs. Frank on the resolution, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Nubiallo?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Abstain.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution carries. Next item on the agenda then is a resolution ordering Phase Two of Bowman Field Improvement Project.
Resolution authorizing the City of Williamsport to award contracts for the historic Bowman Field Improvement Project.
Thank you, there are motion in a second to approve this resolution. Here are motion in a second, Mr. Nichols.
Um, thank you, the, this resolution is to award Phase Two of the Bowman Field Improvement Project, which completes renovations to all the locker rooms and other related spaces, expansion of the press box area, construction of a new pump house, and replacement of the facility boiler. The bids for this phase totaled five hundred and five thousand dollars, and is part of the current Rackby project. We've included, in your information, the binder, the commitment letter to, from the Crosscutters, the Rackby documentation, the bid tabulation sheet, the construction manager's letter of recommendation, the related bid forms, also provide you with an updated Bowman Field Funding Plan, as well as a commitment letter from the Visitors Bureau. There's still another phase of this project, which I think you're aware of, and that's for the scoreboard, and we're recommending it be handled by the Crosscutters through a sub-reception agreement. The state procurement rules allow the Crosscutters to do this, and they'll be able to better manage this part of the project, as they have the expertise, and it also will allow for the city to avoid certain legal issues, which prevented a bid award. So it was, the process was just cumbersome and convoluted, so they have agreed to do this, and it'll make for a much better project. We anticipate there'll be time for the expanded press box to be completed prior to the Crosscutter season, and the remainder of the project to be completed by the end of the year. Public Works did review this, and I defer back to the Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Katz?
Yes, this did come to public works, we did approve this with positive recommendation. Some of the funding, some of the, the funding for this is coming, half of it's coming from our cap, fifty thousand is coming from the Act Fifteen, fifty thousand is coming from the Visitors Bureau, and two hundred thousand dollars is coming from the Bowman Field account. We are just doing the press box, and as you said, the visitors locker room. I did not realize we were doing the boilers and those things also.
Yeah, that, that was sort of a recent-
That wasn't discussed.
But, yeah, that sort of was a recent part of the project that we had to add.
Okay.
Because it blew up, or whatever it did.
We went through the water issue for season and determined that it was, it's very open with the underpound.
Okay, so where's the money coming from, for that? Because that's not part of that, this-
We can deduct some of the scope out of, out of the project and cover that in the project.
Okay. Is there a cost for the boiler, did, did you-
We have, we have a few costs on the bidding estimates right now.
You're out, it's out for bids?
Yes, I would say, the bidding estimates right now.
It's unfortunately failed before we expected it, but, um-
And all bids are in for the press box, or are we still coming out for the bids?
Yes.
This is for the bids? Okay, okay. But we did approve this with a positive recommendation, other than the boiler, we didn't, had no clue of the boiler.
Thank you, thank you very much, other comments or questions on the resolution, Mr. Nubiallo?
Just out of curiosity, do you have any idea where this reduced scope might come from?
Uh, because it's a plumbing issue, we can try to reduce some of, of the plumbing, the plumbing scope if, if need be. When we get the final numbers, we'll know, right now, it's, I'm sure we've been fifteen to twenty thousand dollars.
Thinking if you could apprise us what that reduced scope would be before it develops, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, Public Services, you know, has assisted us greatly in the past, so we could shave some costs off there, and, um, so, you know, we have to make it happen, because it's, doesn't function, so if we need to scope back the locker rooms a little bit, or something, you know, Reynolds will figure out a way to do it.
Thank you, Ms. Mealy?
Um, so the, the allocation is fifty thousand dollars in the Visitors Bureau, fifty thousand dollars from Act Thirteen, three hundred thousand dollars, or, or three hundred thousand dollars from Rackby, right? And then two hundred thousand from the, from the Bowman Field Fund. What does that leave in the Bowman Field Fund then, remaining?
Uh, at the beginning of the year, it was thirty-some thousand, but we feel with, you know, a lot of use of the field and MLB coming back, that we should be able to get that back up to a hundred thousand by the end of the year. I mean, that's my hope.
Okay, and so I, I guess the, the drive behind my question, and this might be a question better asked to Adam, is how much money we need to keep in the, in the fund to maintain Bowman Field, the, the basic maintenance that we do on the field annually? I just want to make sure that we're not dropping it below the point where we can fund annual operations. I, I know, we allocate about fifty grand out of the general fund, too, so we're, we're covered. We, we don't need that much cash flow on the Bowman Field Fund, okay?
I work strictly off of the general.
Okay, got it, all right, excellent, and that takes care of that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slaughter?
What is the Bowman Field account?
What is it, it's, it's the capital account that money's set aside from the fees, the Crosscutter fees, the utilization of the field, any kind of revenues generated from Bowman Field go back into Bowman Field. So that's how we funded the Rackby projects over the years, is we've set aside any kind of fees to match any kind of capital project.
And so, because I don't recall seeing the Bowman Field account anywhere in our budget booklets.
Well, it was included with the information that was requested of all the funds, and that was provided to council a couple of months ago.
And that, so the Bowman Field account is not included in our, when we're reviewing the budget booklet, though?
It never has been, that's not our, that's not our responsibility.
So the, the money that goes into the Bowman Field account, who, I guess my question is, who authorizes that?
Who authorizes what?
The money going in and out of the Bowman Field account.
Uh, any kind of expenditure has to be authorized by council.
So if we're not aware of any of that, so before we got that, how, so what was happening with the Bowman Field account, say, last year?
I don't understand your question.
We didn't know anything about the Bowman Field account, for example, in twenty, so were there expenditures from the Bowman Field account in 2018?
Well, you can always go to the control, the controller gets all the bank records, not, not finance. We get all the records from the controller's office, so feel free to ask the controller. That's usually how it's disseminated, from the controller's office.
I, just to clarify, are we talking about, any, any expenditures have to be approved by council, as you clarified? I think the question specifically is, who ensures that revenues go into the Bowman Field account? Is that the administration?
Correct.
And that is-
Which is audited, and which is set forth in a single audit.
My, I, I guess, the, the question is, it sounds as though there, there aren't any expenditures in the Bowman Field account.
I'm sorry?
It sounds as though there have been no expenditures from the Roman, from the Bowman Field account. That's why we have a chunk of money in there?
Um, no, there hasn't been any expended, hardly any expenditures over the last two or three years, because of MLB.
I don't, I don't recollect any, that's why, but, okay.
Right, that, that was essentially my question, if we don't know about it, there, has there been any expenditures from this Bowman Field account? Or has it just been generating revenue, revenue, revenue?
It's been, yeah, it's been generating revenue.
Without any expenditures?
With very, none that I can think of.
I mean, I think that's, that's the question is-
But I need an account like that in my personal file夹里.
I mean, there's, it's concerning that there's a, there's an account that's generating this type of revenue that we weren't aware of, I guess is, and to ensure that there's no expenditures coming out of that account.
Well, I would hesitate to use the word "we," because for, I've been here quite a while, and it was very, always very well-known by council.
What was very well-known?
The Bowman Field account, they always watched over the account.
Ms. Mealy just said, I thought she said she wasn't.
I, I think, I, I would, I would definitely say, if you're, if you're passing it to me here for a second, that, that-
There is a mech, you know, there's a mechanism in, in place for council to review that account monthly, and if that mechanism isn't utilized, then it's not our responsibility. And it's, no one asks, no one asks, so-
That, that certain things fall off the historical radar, as we change membership in both the administration and in city council, and I think that the existence of some of these smaller funds is one of those things that simply, it's, it's not reported directly from the Finance Department, because it falls to the controller's office. With a change in the office of the controller, sometimes we, you know, some of those reports change, and we don't know where to look for the information.
And the information gets summarized, but it wouldn't be labeled Bowman Field account, but it gets summarized in the audit, there are several types of funds in the audit, and I always forget their names. Mr. Pavlock can probably help me with this. There's money set aside by action of council that's called one thing, there's money set aside in accounts by action of the administration that's called another thing, and I never remember those names.
It's gonna be a restricted use, because it's restricted for specific purposes. We're restricting the, the fees for the stadium for future capital projects.
And what is it, if it's restricted use by the action of council, that has a different accounting name?
It's committed, I believe, and then it's assigned by the administration.
Okay, so in essence, the Bowman Field Capital Fund is an assigned account? On, of what we would see in the audit?
We would show it restricted.
Okay, so they, but they get summarized and not detailed in the audit? The only place where we'd see them broken down is in a report from the controller's office?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So, I mean, just to summarize, I guess, from my standpoint, it would be extremely help-
If we had-
A, for transparency purposes, just a breakdown of what's in the accounts, so we know, just, if for nothing else, if for nothing else, transparency, you know, just so we know, here's the accounts we have, here's what's in them, and it's just, so we can see, even, even if we're not doing any expenditures out of them, just trans, for transparency, say, we have the Bowman Field account, we have, you know, X, Y, Z accounts.
So it, it sounds to me that that's something we probably should be requesting in the controller's office on a monthly, or at least a quarterly basis, right? You know, that, that is, is my understanding of, of where that information should be coming from, so.
Can I ask the Finance Committee to approach the controller for that?
She's at every meeting, so that, as long as somebody else may remember, that shouldn't be hard.
I mean, I would just be interested to see the expenditures over the last few years, and the activity out of the Bowman Field account.
I, I think you're very right, Mr. S-
But all the accounts going forward?
Exactly.
Yeah.
And we do have that listing now, we, we did request that and get that, so we have a- And we do have that listing now. We did request that and get that, so we have a baseline to start with, to ask questions now that we didn't have before.
Right, yeah, but we'll follow up on that.
Is that everything, Mr. Slaughter?
No.
Okay. Other comments or questions on the resolution for Bowman Field? Mr. Raiders?
When, when does this work begin? When is it going to be completed? I know we're running into baseball season here. How's all the timing work out for this?
Again, with the, we, how we've had it scheduled and set to go, if everything was approved, then the press box expansion was first. We wanted that done before the cross cutter season, and then we would reserve everything else right after the season, so not to interfere with any, any activity.
Okay, so the only thing moving ahead, besides just, well, the, the only thing that's really moving ahead right now is the press box.
That's correct.
Everything else.
I know Dave wants to give you an update on that.
If we get the recommendation today, we will talk with contractors tomorrow, just to verify, make sure everything is good to go, timely. It only gives us about a month to get that press work done. But obviously, we gotta get all four trades involved, and get all the contracts committed tonight, hopefully, that we can get everything done, get, get that work scheduled. Now, if there's a chance, or we're running close, that we're not gonna have the press box done, you know, maybe we do that after the season as well. Again, we have a schedule, but we really couldn't commit to that schedule until we get signed contracts.
Yeah, I just, good, I just wondered, kind of a base timeline there. Another question I might have is, is there a process by which we inspect the work then of, of all of the contractors that we have, you know, doing all this? What is that process exactly, and if we're unsatisfied, where do we go from, from there? How does that work out?
As a construction manager, we'll do all the inspections for the construction work. As the city, the city will do their building inspections. There is a third-party inspection as, as for life safety issues. We always have the fire department and the police department, if need be, walk through the facilities before we open.
Okay, and, and if there is a, an issue with any of those inspections, something fails inspection, I'm assuming there's a process to resolve that?
Yes, we typically do a punch list, and, and any of the deficiencies that are noted on a punch list will get resolved. And us being the construction managers, we will sign off on those before the city will accept them. We will accept them on the city's behalf.
Okay.
And the codes department. If the codes department finds something that is not correct, they'll give us a report. We will get those remediated and, and get our certificates of occupancy as noted.
Thank you.
Mr. Slaughter?
Just a follow-up to that. Did, did we inspect Phase One of the project, then, of Bowman Field? Of the, were there any, was there any concerns about the first piece of the Bowman Field?
The, the first phase being the, the seating bowl addition and the, and the dugouts?
And, and the deck and all of that, yeah?
Uh, we were not involved in the deck, but in the first phase, yes. We did, exactly as, as I just mentioned, we did the codes reviews, we did third-party inspections.
So, you didn't wanna, so were there any concerns with that first part of any of the construction?
No, no, as, as you know, we put new dugouts in, a new field, a new seating in sixty-seven days last year, which was. Oh, he's talking about the deck, okay.
Were there, were there any concerns of the, so you didn't review the deck?
No, we were not hired as a construction manager for the first base deck addition.
And so, do we have any contracts that have not yet been closed out from that first part of those, of that work?
I think there is. Yes, Lundie's contract is not closed out.
And so, are we named in any type of issues with those contracts? Is the city named in any of that?
I can't answer on the city's behalf on that. I was not involved in that. I, I did some, some personal, I just put some eyes on some things. So, there's some things there that needed rest. I can just say that.
So, for me, you know, to look at, at the work on behalf of the city, you know, I would think that we would want to have everything from the first part done with before moving forward, taken care of, closed out, not anything.
Well, I think there's, there's only one concern, is just the Lundie situation. That's something I know.
As far as any certificates of occupancy, third-party handicap, third-party electrical, that's all been contained in compliance. That's drastic, as far as the building can be used, it's safe for the general public to use.
So, it's okay for them to use and move forward. Everything's good.
Anything else you're talking about, I agree not having that deal, but as far as the building itself, and the deck, and the use of the cooking area and all that, it's all compliant.
Question about that, was there a construction manager on the deck? I know it wasn't you, so it's not a question for you, I'm sorry.
No, there was not.
There was not?
There is a construction company that has a foreman in charge of the facility that we've talked to, that person is here in contact.
But that's.
The city alone is seeing it?
But, but one of the things we've seen in projects, I've seen in projects over the years, is you have the chief, the contractor with their foreman, then you have a construction manager, often Reynolds, that oversees and, and certifies that it was done right on behalf of the city as a second contract. And then, of course, we do the codes enforcement, but not all projects have a construction manager.
That's correct.
We've just found on the, the larger projects, there's value in having a construction manager, because, you know, city, city staff can't be on-site every day, nor do we always have the expertise that we would need. And so, there's value in paying someone to be our eyes and ears, which is why we have our, our construction manager, and such a strong track record with Reynolds. Often, but not always in that role. And so, just thank you for answering the question. There was not a construction manager on that particular part of the project.
That's correct.
So, there was, so.
Mr. Slaughter?
So, essentially, there was nobody then to sign off on that?
On that part.
On that part of the first piece, got it.
Other comments or questions on the resolution related to Phase Two of Bowman Field? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the resolution.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Stain.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution carries. Next item on the agenda, then, is a resolution authorizing the filing of grant with DCNR. Mrs. Frank?
Resolution authorizing the City of Williamsport to submit a resolution to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources.
Thank you. Is there a motion a second to approve this resolution? Here, a motion a second, Mr. Nichols?
Yes, thank you. This resolution is for the submission, approved the submission of a grant, application to DCNR for the Gateway Project specifically. It's the Russellin Heritage Park project. Provide information about this project in your binder. The project was reviewed by the Finance Committee. Mike Snyder is here from Gannett Fleming to give you a brief overview, if you so desire, but the, the rendering of the, the project was included with the application. It does a number of things, it provides a needed green space in the Gateway Project area. It also provides a historical perspective of that area being old city, and the vision was to bring attention to that being the original part of Williamsport. And so, the idea came forth about the outline of the first building in Williamsport called the Russellin, which was located at the corner of Third and Mulberry, and then developing a part of that parking lot in to provide a history of the various neighborhoods that made Williamsport what it is, and so, with sitting walls, that type of thing. So, you know, we did have a conversation with DCNR, they're very excited about the project. It also does a major part in terms of the MS four requirements, best practices, as you all know about. So, we look at the opportunity here as doing a number of things, as I mentioned. So, again, if you have any questions, you can talk to Mr. Snyder, and other than that, I defer back to you.
Thank you, and for finances review, Ms. Mealy?
Yes, Finance reviewed this item and forwarded it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. We did have a handful of discussions. The, obviously, the, the final design of the park has yet to be determined. That's going to relate heavily to how much funding we have, for one thing, whether or not we receive any grant funding, and, and also to, you know, to discussions with stakeholders in the area, to concerns related to, to some of the stakeholders in the area. I think we've all heard opinions voiced about that particular parking area, which is currently pretty heavily used. And Mr. Nichols said they're looking at replacing that parking within the immediate neighborhood in order to move forward with the Russellin Park, but that's one of the questions that would have to be answered before we move forward, the green space in that location. That said, obviously, a green space, rather than street phone parking on Third Street, is probably desirable, and, and the, the neighborhood is lacking in, somewhat lacking in green space, especially if we're looking to develop some of what's currently empty, empty land in that, in that general area. So, so hopefully, of course, we move forward with both the park and some private development on the other two corners. And with that said, the, you'll have to pardon me, I actually don't. I'm trying to remember. Mr. Nichols, when we were looking at the, at the match for that, oh, with, it's coming out of the City of Williamsport's funding on that chart. So, the, the match for the hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars from DCNR would be a thirty-eight thousand dollar commitment from the bond funding that we authorized a few years ago. So, once again, this is simply a grant application, but we do have funding in place for a match. It is part of the project that we have so far approved, and there will be further opportunities for input on design from both council and the, the local neighborhood, and, and consequently, Finance forwarded it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
Just to add to what you said, I maybe mentioned it, that this was a priority, the First Community Foundation grant to the city, because of their desire, you know, for green space and those kind of improvement projects, as part of any economic development project. So, they did take the primary lead in providing the match.
Well, the match, I think, is currently coming from city funds.
Sorry?
The match is currently coming from city funds, but you mean?
No, it's, 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 that is accurate. On the source of news, that hundred forty-three thousand five five four from the First Community Foundation, and thirty-eight thousand six fifty-one percent.
Okay, okay, got it. I didn't realize that they also had a match in the game, but yeah, never mind, it would have to be a fifty-fifty match. I forget that about DCNR. It sounds a.
Case to watch, and I just wanted to mention.
Those numbers are starting to move around on that chart from you, Mr. Nichols. I'm not sure, just, just all on their own, they're walking on the page. But, but yes, I, I would, the, the proposed design of the park, I think, is, will be, would be an attractive addition to the neighborhood. But I would encourage all of us, and particularly the, the folks who are working on this from the administration, to make certain that that is what the neighborhood wants to see there as well. That's really a crucial component. I think green space is an asset to every neighborhood, but, but we need to make certain that the, that the green space serves the needs of, of those in the community, you know, frankly, be they human or animal, I suppose, but, but especially the human needs that we can, that we can certainly ask about. But I think I've covered finances, discussion on it.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Mr. Allison?
Concerning the, the grant, if, if some things changed as we go forward, suppose the total grant wasn't awarded, or some other kind of can't-miss development came along that, that would take that space up there, or the parking remained, would it be possible to move that project to something close by?
Well, you'd lose the aspect of the Russellin Heritage, you know, because that's where, where that outline is, is shown, is where the Russellin, that's the actual outline of that original first building in the City of Williamsport. So, you move that to another site, it really takes away the, from the historic aspect of that site. But if the grant's approved, it would be specific to that location.
It would be, okay.
If not, certainly you can move it to a green space in another area, if there was a location.
I'm just thinking ahead, what, what, if things changed, if there were other options for that. And the, the one thing we did discuss is, you even, you said you could have a portion of parking there, and a portion of green space, so there are a lot of options going forward, depending on how much, if any, dollars we have to put there.
No, it's, again, these type of projects, especially this one, it's so dynamic that, that, I mean, it's always shifting a little bit. So, you know, I think we just gotta make sure everybody needs to keep an eye on what the community's needs and vision are going forward. You don't want to, you know, deviate from that, so.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? Mr. Noviello?
I kind of see this in, in my mind's eye as, as an element of stabilizing the area, much in the same way we're looking to stabilize the Park Avenue project area. This is the first, you know, sort of, maybe call it a baby step, if you will, to get us rolling on this project, and, and certainly is going to be connecting to the Basin Street references that we're dealing with as well. So, you know, this is not a too difficult, you know, grant to be seeking, I don't think. I do think it will get us off the mark here, and the sooner we can see something of a visible nature, the further I think the interest in the whole area down there will grow. And that's the kind of thing we need, it's the stabilizing effect and the future effect that we'll have by stabilizing it now. So, this is easy to support, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Mr. Henderson?
I think it'll be good for, obviously, we want to get the support of, of the surrounding properties and, and businesses. And crucial to that, I think, will be to develop a plan for parking, a clear plan for parking. And so, I think, you know, that'll, that'll have to be a real focus for us moving forward here in this direction. But I, I, I think it looks, the idea is, it's fantastic, you know, and, and I think it'd be, it'd be really great so long as we can meet the needs of, of parking. So, I think that, once, you know, once we move ahead with this, I'm not sure we'll be able to, to do a whole lot until we have that plan in place as well. Thank you.
Again, any input is, is welcome. You know, we're trying to move forward the vision of the original commission, and, you know, take advantage of possible grants. And we've been very surprisingly able to get these grants for this project. And so, it's not my project, it's a city project, and so, I would welcome positive recommendations for any of this, you know. It'd be very helpful.
Other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution carries. Next item on the agenda is resolution authorizing the city to proceed with city hall improvements. Mrs. Frank?
Resolution authorizing the appropriate city officials and necessary professional services to proceed with the city hall improvement project.
Thank you. Is there a motion a second to approve this resolution?
Don't move.
Second.
Here, a motion a second, Mr. Nichols?
This last resolution for the city hall improvement project. I took the liberty of providing with an updated resolution. As recommended by the Public Works Committee, which changed the security part of the project to be, to be bid as an add-on, along with the ADA ramp. We also received an updated funding plan for the project, and again, Mike Snyder from Gannett Fleming is taking the lead, working with the city to develop the three priorities that, that he will talk about, and, and trying to move this project that's somewhat been stalled for a lot of good reasons. But we're, I think, at a point now, we need to make a decision one way or the other as to what we need to address. And so, Mike will take you through a quick overview of the project, and as I said, you have the updated resolution, which I hopefully addresses what Public Works wanted to see, and I'll turn it over.
Thank you.
If that's all right. Is that all?
Absolutely. Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I guess he's going to do a.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. Absolutely.
Hi, my name is Mike Snyder. I just want to take you through quickly some of the considerations for the city hall project. The three items that Bill Nichols mentioned, the deficiencies that we. The three items that Bill Nichols mentioned, the deficiencies that we noted, were the elevator, which is at the end of its useful life, we don't think it's going to make it through its next inspection. The accessibility to the building in the first place is, is lacking. There is a ramp in the rear, but that ramp, there's no accessible path from the sidewalks to that ramp, so that's where the police parking currently is. And I'll get to another concern with, with that rear entrance as well. The front of the building, we looked at, well, I should say, when we started off looking at accessibility to the building, we considered several options. We looked at a ramp on the east side of the building where the current entrance to the basement is located. We looked at doing a ramp down to that basement level. Ultimately, we kind of passed on that option because of the implied cost and potential maintenance and security issues with digging down into the ground and getting water out of there, needing to provide a sump pump, which can, over time, break down leaf buildup, potential location for activity of questionable legality, I should say, to take place. And so then, the second option we looked at was on the west side of the building to add a, a lift to that, just to the south of the existing stairs, in which case we would need to alter the stairs a little bit to provide that access. Ultimately, that option, we got away from as well because of maintenance concerns, as well as aesthetic concerns of having a, a metal lift located on that side of the building. Another option we looked at was an entrance directly at grade, so creating a vestibule essentially in front of the elevator tower. So you would enter a lobby, an enclosed lobby, and then you would enter the elevator on that level. The elevator would then take you to whatever level you would up, and exit the elevator on the opposite side of the elevator. Ultimately, that had concerns of aesthetics, cost, because it's essentially in addition to the building, and, and that, those were the main two reasons why we kind of got away from that option. The last option we looked at was a ramp at the front of the building that would provide access to that center or that main entrance. And if you can advance the slide, one more, please. And then, actually, one more, so I can get, get to this, so that you're looking at what would be the proposed entrance to the ramp at the sidewalk level. We ran this option by the State Historical Board, and we went through several options of railing for this. We had a one that was more solid, and ultimately, the Historical Board recommended more of a, an open feel to have less impact on the visual of the building, and so we've done that. And if we go back to the previous slide, the ramp, then, on the left-hand side, you'll see comes up and it will provide access to the left entrance door. And then we would obviously have to revise the stair to provide access to the, the right-hand side door. This option was also favorable because it allowed equal access for people with disabilities. The entrance in the back, even if we were to find a way to make that accessible, it would require people with disabilities to go around the back, and it would not be equitable for, for everyone, because people without disabilities can just go into this main entrance where people with disabilities would be required to go around back, which is not an equal situation. So this option here with the front ramp solved that problem as well. And the other problem that it solved as a maybe potential alternate to the project is that it would allow us to provide better security in the building, having one access point for everyone to come into the building. And if we can go back to the plan, I think, one slide back, this, I apologize, this is very light, but as you enter into the lobby from either the ramp or the stair entrance, you would be directed to go to the left, to the area which is currently right opposite of the elevator entrance, and that would be converted into a security and slash reception area. Once the visitor goes to that location, identifies their purpose in the building, the person behind the desk would then allow them access to either the elevator or, on the western side of the lobby, there's another door that would allow them access to the stair or the tax office. And if we can go forward a couple slides, one, two more, maybe, that, this is a preliminary view of what that controlled access would be in the elevator on the side where the tax office is. So the, the door, the entrance door that you're looking at on the right-hand side, the exterior door, those would be, would have card reader access on those, and would be primarily exit only for, for the public. So the, the entry for the public or the ingress would be through the Fourth Street side of the, of the building. And that's, and that's the, unless there's any other questions, I can field those, but that's essentially the short description I can provide. Oh, the, and the elevator, sorry, the elevator, like I said, it's at the end of its serviceable life, so what we'll be doing there is, it's not a, it's not a full replacement, we're keeping what we can and replacing only what we need to, to save cost. We're essentially keeping the, the elevator platform, we're providing a new cab, new elevator equipment that will basically allow the elevator to operate functionally, and, and we're providing new doors as well, because those are, those are being problematic at the moment as well. And if, Adam, I don't know if you have anything to add? Okay. So, like I said, we're trying to do as minimal as possible to, to make the elevator functional and legal. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Mrs. Katz?
Okay, this did come to Public Works. A lot of discussion on, on these improvements. The first thing was the priority, of priority was the elevator. One of the things that we discussed really during and afterwards was the inspection of the elevator. If we could get through another year, that would be fantastic, but we don't know that. The inspection, you still haven't heard, have you, Adam? The inspection was due as, as we speak now. The report was supposed to come back as we speak now. The problem that we're, we're, the discussions that came up and the problems that we've had, talking about the repairs to City Hall, to do all the repairs to the elevator, you're talking close to $300,000, and that's a huge chunk of change. Plus, with repairing the elevator, I think everybody has to be aware that it's going to be shut down for anywheres from a month to two months. So therefore, the public will not have, all the public will not have access to meetings and committee meetings, and even some of the employees. So what we discussed is that a lot of the meetings are going to have, all the meetings are going to have to be held elsewhere during the shutdown of that elevator. And then the other discussion that came up was, do we want to go through all this expense with a new administration coming in in January, with spending all this kind of money on these kind of repairs, if a new administration comes in? And we have talked for, I would say, at least four years, five years of moving out of City Hall, because all the improvements that we are talking about, what we talked about, what's on your agenda, what you showed here, is close, it's six, over $600,000. What also has to be improved in City Hall is the HVAC system, your, the roof is leaking all over the place. So what we have been told, total, we can have improvements to meet the codes to anywheres from $5 to $10 million to fix everything up in City Hall. Now, do we want to spend that kind of money in, in this kind of a building, that when you get into ADA complacency, this building will never be able to be ADA compliant because of the, the structure of this building? In order to do that, you're, you're talking even more money. So, you know, the, the discussions that we were having during, over these, over these improvements, were all over the place. We don't know what we should do. Should we wait for the inspection to come through? Should we wait and find out if it passes, and then can we go through for another year and see where we go? But the elevator is vital, it's vitally important. We can't let it, we can't just let it sit. It has to be done one way or the other. Even if we move out of here, that elevator's got to be fixed, okay? But we don't know whether we should wait for another year or not to see if we do pass that inspection. Again, it's, it, that was the highest priority. Then you get into the ramp, you get into the security elements, let's go into the security elements. The discussion that came up with security was, who was going to sit at the desk to check everybody that comes in? The problem with that is, the police department is in charge of the security of this building. Already, the union is questioning, who is going to be in charge? Who's going to sit at that desk? We cannot afford to have a police officer sitting there at his salary just to check people into, into City Hall. So we've got to find out the, the problems in that area. With the elevator, when the bids go in, we also have to make sure that the security systems are, are bidded in with the elevator and the doors, because you don't want to rebid, because it costs more money to have rebidding. So there's a lot of things that are questioned with, with doing City Hall. The treasurer's office, Nick was really, you know, concerned. His main concern was, we have thousands of people that come in to pay their taxes, and they are just pleased to come into City Hall where they are not, if they go to the county, they have to go through screening and, and everything else. Here, they can walk in and pay their taxes and walk out. And he's a little bit concerned that when we start doing this, that it's going to start upsetting our taxpayers. Again, as we said, security, we're going to have to do something, but it's another, it's another element to put into place here. Again, Nick was also saying how his office would have to be readjusted and everything. When you look at that, that looks really gorgeous, but again, is it viable? Are we asking the people that are working in those departments if that's how they are going to be able to function correctly and efficiently? So these are, we did pass this with a positive recommendation, but with a lot of amendments to this, and I know that sounds bizarre, okay, that we did pass it with a positive recommendation, because the elevator is the high, high, a high priority, but the others, the, the ADA ramp, which we do want to, I know that's important to do, but we would like to review that and come up and see what kind of options have, can come up with that also. I mean, the, the pictures look gorgeous. I know the Center for Independent Living looked at this, they thought it was really great, but again, we're talking a lot of money to, to do just the front of this building with security. So that, that was our discussion.
Thank you. I have a, let, let me actually start with a couple of questions on, on, from my perspective on this. Was Gannett Fleming asked to consider the full range of needs of City Hall, or were they specifically directed to consider the accessibility and elevator and security issues?
Reynolds, Reynolds was asked.
I'm sorry, Reynolds. So Reynolds reviewed the full situation, the full range of needs for City Hall?
Yeah, I think I did that about a year ago.
If you could, just, because this might be a little bit longer.
Yes, I think we did a full building assessment about a year ago. I think that's where some of these topics came up with, like the HVAC and the...
The roof and...
The fire, the fire extinguishers and, and life safety issues, the roof.
And, and in that assessment, did you, were you asked, or did you prioritize those needs in a particular order?
And that's kind of how we came up with these priorities here.
So it, based on that analysis, you believe accessibility, elevator and security outranks, basically, that the building is unsound from rain and can't heat and cool many of the spaces appropriately?
If, if you...
I mean, I don't know how to describe it better, so I don't mean to add judgment into the decision.
No, again, it comes down to, to, to funding, too.
Sure, of course.
You know.
But if you've got, if you've got $450,000 ready to spend, and now it's $650,000, but if, the first $650,000, those are the most critical needs over, based on the assessment work that you did, over and above the, the condition of the roof or HVAC or any of the other needs?
Yes, and right now, we, we kind of work these three priorities, and I think we're in line with the budget that we were given.
Okay. And the reason I ask that is because of, from a layman's perspective, to me, it would seem that you would do basic existing infrastructure first, including elevator, right? But including, you know, making sure that water doesn't come into the building, and that you can comfortably work and, and visit the building at the meetings, et cetera, I'm saying, on a hot evening in this room that's never the right temperature. And then you make improvements that are absolutely necessary, right? To, to be 30 years late on making sure that this building is accessible to the full population of Williamsport is, we shouldn't have taken 30 years since the passage of ADA to get there. So I have no question about the need for that. I'm talking about, given the existing funding, what do you do, what order you do it in, nor am I questioning the design, which I think is aesthetically pleasing, historically appropriate, and solves the problem on the ramp design. I'm just trying to figure out, what do you do first? And, and what you're saying is, you were asked to assess all of the needs, and based on your, or your company's professional judgment, dealing with accessibility, security, and...
Functionality.
And func, the, the ramp and the, and the elevator and the security were of the highest priority compared to the other needs.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And, and, and I wasn't doubting that judgment, I just didn't know whether that assessment had occurred, because from a layman's perspective, you build a solid roof and then you fill it in with all the details. Your questions or comments from members of council? Mr. Henderson?
We, yeah, I was in Public Works as we were discussing this, and we were, we were talking about the funding sources for this. We have the $400,000 bond balance, and then $250,000 in City Hall contingency fund, and we were asking about that contingency fund, and that was our anticipated savings for the roof. So we would be taking that from what we've been saving for the roof in order to do this. We just have to think through that, and so I think it's an important part of, of the discussion. So prioritizing that, as was just mentioned, is important for us to consider. So, and then, because of the discussion, there was a lot of different opinions as far as securing the building and the access, and just different thoughts on that, and it seems like we could come to maybe a better plan, maybe we could have our, our department heads get together again or something and, and work through this, especially with our treasurer, and to meet some of those concerns, and we might be able to come in under this budget if we were to do that as well. I think that, my opinion, and that of, as far as I could tell, of the other members on Public Works, was that we need this elevator, we need to do this as soon as possible, and because of that, we wanted to enable, you know, allow that and get that moving forward because of, of the inspection. So part of the changes that we made to the original resolution, in essence, what we did is we, we made the elevator the high priority, and then the ramp and the security elements would be, would be add alternates. So that the bids, when they're coming in, they'll be bid out that way, and we can choose later on whether or not we have the funds, or we decide to go ahead with the security elements or the ramp. to go ahead with the security elements or the ramp as we find the funds to do that. So that's kind of the process that we went through and that's why we approved the resolution with those amendments, which I appreciate Bill Nichols bringing that changes for us. Appreciate that. So just wanted to explain a little bit from my perspective there on how we got to where we are.
Thank you. Mr. Nichols?
If I may, again, we brought forth what we thought were the three highest priorities, obviously. And I think they're pretty obvious. And, and it was, I think, good strategy to talk about the highest priority being the elevator. Obviously, that's clearly needed. But the other two are also high priorities. And so I think what Joe and the architect would like to do is clearly define the downsides of not doing the other two components. So you have a full understanding of what the issues are, you know? It's, it's not a matter of just money, but it's a matter of just, you know, it's been a while since we've addressed this. So just want to make sure, because that's going to be a difficult decision to make in terms of awarding part of it, you know, two-thirds of it, what have you. So I think what Joe indicated to me is that he wants to make sure that you have all the issues well defined so you can make, you know, a good decision.
Thank you. One thing I would ask when that time comes, that we, that we have a clear plan from the administration for the man, the personnel costs and the man, the strategy for staffing the security checkpoint. Because if we're going to make the capital, commitment to the capital expenditure at that time with the ad alternates, that we should have a full understanding of what the operating expenditures will also be. Ms. Mealy?
And the, the plan, of course, for the rather unusual operating hours of City Hall, we're not simply a nine to five or eight thirty to four in the case of codes or whatever establishment. We have all sorts of off-hours and curious meetings. And if we're about to build, if we're about to make the only handicapped accessible entrance to City Hall and entrance is completely protected by a security gateway, then we need to obviously plan to have someone at that security gateway during any function, including repes band, et cetera, et cetera, events here in City Hall. And so that's, that's more than a full-time position, I guess, is my concern. And, and that's more than one person. And so we need to talk about what that looks like and how we fund that and, and/or how we control those hours so that we're not, we don't have as much exposure there. I'm not sure, but, but you're right, there are cost concerns aside from that. If I can move forward onto another point unless someone else wants to address that issue. Help me to understand the money that we potentially have in place to fund this? The bond allocation, $450,000?
Actually, I think I listed... Four hundred?
Four hundred.
And where did the other 50,000? I know we spent 50,000 on security upgrades requested by the police department, but the other 50,000 from that allocation?
Four hundred bond, bond balance, the City Hall contingency fund, 250,000.
Okay, so where did, what did we spend the other 50,000 in the bond allocation on?
Sorry, dollars have been spent. We've done, you know, a lot of soft costs, engineering, design, what have you.
Okay.
So, so to understand, we had 500,000, just to step back.
Started with 500.
There were $500,000 allocated for City Hall improvements. $50,000 were expended on the first round of security improvements for the police, leaving a balance of 450. And what you're saying is $50,000 have gone into engineering and design work?
Or will be.
Or will be. So in fact, the budget is 700,000, not 650, if you include the soft costs?
I know I'm tired, but I don't, I'm not sure how you did that.
Yeah, because that other...
Fuzzy math, what did I miss?
The budget we currently have outlined is...
I was supposed to say yes.
So, yeah, I think that pretty much answers my question. So we, City Council has not officially allocated those funds then, but they are anticipated to be spent as soft costs associated with the 653 capital expenditure, all of which is basically construction costs.
Yeah, again, that's why this resolution was put together to give us the green light to go ahead. So, you know, that we bring, what we need to bring before you to bid the project.
Yeah, no.
Because there's something...
I'm just asking because we haven't seen any documentation on those expenditures, so...
None, none other than what you've done so far.
Okay.
So that's why, this is a little different resolution. Wasn't quite sure how to handle it because we can't seem to, you know, get in motion here. So, and there's some serious issues with the elevator. So this is a green light resolution that you're giving us, I guess, to start the process.
Got it. I guess I'm just asking when, this is a question about when we authorize the expenditure of that additional $50,000 in soft costs and how? This, this authorizes an expenditure of $50,000 in soft costs?
No, there was the assessment that was done a year ago, which was not a big amount and some minor things that were done in terms of what you saw today. But if we're going to go ahead and do the project, yes, then there would be something come before you to do just that.
The, the design costs, okay. So, so that would be sort of the first thing that we would look toward was a summary of the engineering and soft costs associated with the project. And then we would see a, and that, I guess I'm simply trying to understand what we're doing budgetarily. Do you see what I'm saying? So we're, we're in some ways presuming the expenditure of a bunch of design and engineering funds with this resolution, whether or not when the bidding process is complete, we have the funding to move forward with the project itself.
I'm sorry.
I said, I said in some ways, we're agreeing to spend the design and soft cost money with this resolution, despite the fact that it is entirely possible the bids, of course, are going to come in over what we can afford to do. And we'll have to pare it down, right? I mean, that's always a risk. I'm not, it's nothing different. I'm just understanding the, the debt, so to speak, that we're assuming. The debt we've already assumed, but that we're allocating if we, if we accept this resolution to move forward with, with at least the bidding portion of the project.
We want to move rapidly. I mean, the elevator's a serious issue, so we need to get...
Yeah, well, and clearly we have enough money to do some of it. But, but just, just try and understand. Okay, that's what I'm thinking of.
Mr. Slaughter?
Kind of to Liz's or to Councilwoman Mealy's point, we're doing a decent amount of borrowing. Do we have, what's our, what's our current city debt? Do we, do we know that?
The funds are already borrowed in place. There's no borrowing involved.
Yeah, but what's our, what's our total city debt right now?
I would refer to Joe, it's around eight. The nine million for the cities, like about the same amount for RVT.
So about 18, 16, 18 million?
Probably.
Total city debt? I mean, I think that's, we just have to have an idea as we move forward with these projects, where we're at with it.
And this, the borrowing specifically for this was done three or four years ago as part of a refinance and a, an additional, if I remember correctly, about $2.5 million in additional debt and refinancing.
Levy, City Hall, East Third Street. There was five projects.
Street Escape.
At 500,000 each.
So, and, and one of the things we did
Bowman.
was very carefully hold on to the 450, at least, well, 400 anyway of it, so that we could have a fund in place once we had a plan for City Hall. But as I was alluding to at that time, most of the discussion was about making sure that the roof was sound and HVAC system functioned.
To that point, I understand other elements, but it seems like water coming in is fairly significant. So, I mean, more, to me, in my opinion, water coming into the building is significantly more important than security. And I think as public servants, as Nick Grimes was saying, we assume a certain level of risk for public service so that the service, the public can easily access our services. And so Nick, you know, in his words, and I, not speaking for him, obviously he's not here, but that's what, I think that was his point, was that the public wants easy access and he is okay with assuming that risk as part of the tax office so that they can easily access his office. And he gets, like Councilwoman Katz said, he gets a lot of people to say, "Thank you. It was nice to come in here, pay my tax bill and leave," you know, "in under five minutes." So, you know, I think that's kind of, the point being is, does security outweigh water coming into our building? In my opinion, no. And I don't understand the rationale around that. But, you know, and also with how much debt we currently have, I think we need to really hone in on that figure as well.
To clarify, I think where I am on this is I think the original resolution was improved quite a bit by saying, all right, we absolutely are signaling that we'll move forward with the highest priority with the elevator. We'll see what the actual costs are for some of the other areas and then use that opportunity to figure out the staffing. It doesn't say this, but figure out the staffing and also the other priorities relative to these. And so I'm more comfortable supporting the resolution as it stands, thanks to the work that Public Works did, than what it would have started out with. Let me go with Mr. Noviello and I see the mayor also.
If I could ask Joe Girardi just a quick question. Joe, could you... With respect to access, are we ADA compliant right now?
No.
Okay. So what happens if we don't pass this and get this going? Are we on a deadline to become ADA compliant?
There is, I'd prefer to discuss those types of things in the executive session. It'd probably be better. I would say this much, that we are not state-regulated when it comes to ADA compliance, okay? We should have an accessible route from your sidewalk to the facility, which we do not, okay? It opens us up for some mitigation, opens up for some things like that. Again, I felt, I feel more comfortable talking about these things at an executive session instead of a public meeting.
And then just to reference Mr. Slaughter's point, I, I understand that, you know, we, keeping the building, you know, safe from leakies and things of that sort is certainly, you know, top-of-the-line priority as well. But I'm thinking if something were to happen in our lobby, the kind of feedback we would get from the public because we worried about a leak rather than the potential loss of someone's life. So there's some concerns that go beyond just fixing a leak or even putting in a ramp to that extent. If we're talking about security, there's a reason for that security. That reason is to protect lives, period.
We, when we, just to let everybody know, when we discuss this, we've been discussing this at our staff meetings on Thursdays for a long, long time. We did go through the roof situation. We have looked at other aspects, bathrooms and so forth. We felt that these were the three main issues that we needed to deal with ASAP. Some of them are mandated. So that's the reason why we picked these three first. Your ramp and your elevator are definitely two things that need to be done as soon as possible, okay? And then security was the other issue we felt was necessary. We did discuss this with Nick also. You get 15 people in a room discussing a project, you're never going to get all 15 to agree on the same things. We felt that through everybody's consensus and the way we talk, these were the three most important things, even though we may not having everybody on the same page with us. We felt we needed to secure the, the safety of the individuals in the building. Also, we felt it was necessary to secure where the most money goes, and that's the treasurer's office. So he's the person who has the most cash. I believe it's safe to say we should probably make him safe from the general public because we don't want people coming in to rob the individual. And as far as the inconvenience, it's a matter of coming through a door, letting somebody either look at you, talk to you, warn you, and then you go through the door and pay your taxes. So I don't see that being a big burden. I really don't. And it's not like we get 150 people at one time coming in to pay their taxes. They do it over a period of time. So again, you're never going to make everybody happy when you come to this, but there are certain things that are mandated that we need to do, so.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Katz?
We were never told that there was, we were mandated.
There was a mandate that was mandated probably 20 years ago. I can't answer for the past administrations, neither can anybody up here.
So for the past 20 years, we have been, might as well say illegal then?
I would say yes. If you were asked to be, they had to be, yes.
But that's never been brought up before?
No. But that's why I said...
That's kind of an eye-opener and that, this puts a...
We've been discussing this for probably, it's, well, we're...
I know, we...
As long as, as long as Mayor has been the mayor, we've been trying to discuss what are priorities, how to get the funding and so forth. And I think it comes to a point where we got to do what we have.
I know, this, this has come up so many different times in conversations, in meetings. And, you know, it's, it's such a catch-22 because of the, the money. And it's, it's a burden on the taxpayers with this building. That's what it really is. It's a burden to the taxpayers. I love this building. The building is absolutely incredible. Everybody that comes through this building is really impressed, but it also costs a lot of money, a lot of money. But to realize that we were meant, supposed to be mandated 20 years ago, that is very disturbing. This should have been maybe a priority much sooner than what we have now at this point. Now we're trying to scramble to do things with, it's like the infrastructure of the city. You know, everything's falling apart. So therefore, we've got to come up with now the money to do all this. And it does put a different spin on this. So I guess we have to say the ramp is important. We know the elevator definitely is important, like we said. Whether we stay here or not, the elevator still has to be fixed. I would just say maybe another year where we can gather more money, but obviously, we might not be able to do that. But when you, when you say the ramp and security, yes, security is important. Who made the statement? I think it was you, Mr. Nichols, that said, "We're probably one of the last buildings in the United States that isn't secure."
I don't know.
You know, and we can understand that. It's, I think what we're, you know, what we're all saying is, we're all a little bit hesitant because of the cost factors. And we know this is a burden. We also realize that, you know, when we're sitting up here in City Council, security, we watch who comes through those doors because you never know. And, you know, it's the same thing with, people have free access to City Hall. And we've said this for, for many, many years, that I've been here anyhow. And I can understand that. It's, we just want to do it correctly and as less expensive, the less money we can spend, but do it correctly. I guess that's what I'm trying to say here. So, thank you.
I have two, so let me go with Mr. Allison and then...
I have a question for Mr. Winter on the elevator. But this discussion on the ADA, we do have a ramp out back. I know it's not compliant now, but ADA has changed on a yearly basis. I, I don't think we can clearly say 20 years ago, we were out of compliance. Things have been tightened.
How long has it been the degree of pitch? It's been quite a while.
Correct.
It's been a quarter inch over every foot. It's been quarter inch over every foot for quite a while, like quite a few years. So that ramp's been out of compliance for quite a long time.
The issue is you can't get from the road to the ramp unless you put another bid to get accessible.
Well, I'm just talking in, like, all the curbs were done to make them ADA compliant. And then that was all changed. So, you know, I'd, I'd like to see the law first before we throw everything under the bus that we've been doing. But in any case, the elevator inspection, it's been done?
I don't know if it's been done yet or not. Ellen I just shows up, they do their inspection, they send us a letter. They give us 30 days to do the repairs. The issue is if we're not in the process of making a move on a new elevator, they will shut the elevator down. Then Mr. Girardi's left with no decision but to shut the building down. So City Hall will potentially be closed.
Right, okay.
My suggestion for council is, and this is just me speaking, you have the best option right now on how to put this out to bid. Elevator first, two ad alternates. Nothing locks you into saying, yes, we're going to take it all. That gives you wheels in motion so that if that inspection comes back, the elevator fails, we're still within compliance. Because the moment that elevator gets shut down, we're not in motion. We're no longer grandfathered. Now you're into a whole nother mess. You're redoing the entire shaft. As far as the roof, there's 40,000 we put in the budget for roof repairs, Joe? So we were looking forward to doing some roof repairs. We'd never be able to afford to do the entire front roof. You'd have to borrow money.
The back roof.
No, the back roof has been already done. There has been some shingles blown off. Unfortunately, slate is not the best thing to be on your roof. We actually had a piece of slate blow off the roof, damage a police car. Thankfully, nobody was walking down there on the back ramp or they probably would have been killed. nobody was walking down there on the back ramp, or they probably would have been killed. But this whole discussion keeps going round and round and round, and our goal is just to get something in motion so that the elevator does not totally get shut down. You guys have the final choice on whether we move forward on one part, two parts, three parts, but the elevator is, without a doubt, has to be on the agenda.
And that makes sense. I guess, I'm going forward, and we should have had this a long time ago, we need a strategic plan—
I don't disagree. Too many times, the can's been kicked down the road.
—for the city. We shouldn't be at this place right now. We should have already been moving towards something. And I know we started something on that, but it was like, "Oh, it's going to cost all this kind of money, we can't do it." Well, guess what? We're going to spend the money anyhow, and if we stay here, and I just think, we shouldn't follow other bad decisions by more bad decisions. You've convinced me, you know, I understand the elevator, and, I mean, you're making a case for the ramp as well, so we're going to have to—
Well, I'm not saying do it all.
No, and I'm—that—you're—the law is making a case for the ramp, so—
My thing is, the can has been kicked down the road for so long, it's always been a Band-Aid. Well, it's time to pull the Band-Aid off, let's be honest. I mean, I had streets and parks fix a drain leader in the wall down next to the elevator that leaked for years. I had one employee tell me for the twelve years he's been here, he's muddied that every year. We're no longer going to visit that. So, yes, we do have to have strategic planning, we do have to figure out ways to start fixing everything. I mean, honestly, even if the decision was to move out of this building into another building, it's not going to happen for a year, two years, I mean—
Exactly, yeah.
So we have to plan to maintain this building. Are we going to be able to afford to redo all the HVAC? No. We have a plan to start on the fire alarm system to make it ADA compliant. Stephanie Young allocated for next year a hundred thousand dollars of CDBG funds to lower the pool stations, put in the strobes. I mean, we are working on a plan, and it's like you said, the money is limited, so we're trying to work within our means at this point. The only thing I can stress to you is, it doesn't hurt to go out to bid, you're going to get solid numbers on what the ramp's going to cost, what the security's going to cost. As far as security on the first floor, I was in Public Works, I looked at Nick Grimes, I said, "Look, there's ways we can give you access in-house without people going through that door. We put a teller window in where the display cases." We can certainly discuss something, but we can't open the building up to endanger everybody in it because of one department. It's just not feasible. We have to rely on our police chief and give us his best option—or best opinion of what this building needs. That's all I've got, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Slaughter.
Thank you.
To that point, I think it's—I think at some point, we need to have that broader discussion of, is this the right building, or do we just continue to spend and spend and borrow and borrow and borrow and raise taxes and raise taxes and raise taxes and borrow and borrow and borrow? And all we're really doing essentially is spending, and we never have that larger discussion of, are we staying here for the long haul, so are we going to fix everything, or are we going to look at other options? I mean, I think that's the conversation that needs to be had before we just continue to borrow and borrow and borrow and borrow. And, you know, clearly, we all understand the ADA regulations and all of that, but as far as the security and other measures, I think we need to look at the total picture, the larger conversation, and is this the right building? And if not, then what do the other options look like before we continue down this road of debt and debt and debt that's not sustainable by any stretch of the imagination? You know, and I think, to the point of security even further, you know, I don't get wanted when I go into a bank and they have a lot of money. It's very easy to go into the bank, make my transaction and come back out. So I guess I'm still a little—I don't fully—I mean, I understand the security for the police department and others, and that they absolutely need to be secure, I get that. The rest of us, I think we just assume, as bank tellers and others, there's a certain level of risk when dealing with the public, even as a teacher, clearly, we assume risk. I mean, that just is what it is, and I'm not saying anybody's life is not important, all of our lives are important. But I think we need to have that larger discussion, is this building where we're staying? And if it is, then what's that look like? And what's that total cost look like? And if it's not, then what are the other options? And so that's just, you know, kind of what I'm trying to wrap my head around as well.
And I'll say that the council tried to engage others in that discussion two or three years ago and made some progress, but not—didn't reach, obviously, an ultimate conclusion. Are there other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the resolution, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the resolution carries. Next item on the agenda is certificate of appropriateness then of 245 West Forest Street, which we placed on the table, was it two weeks ago? Is there a motion to remove that from the table, or is there not a motion to remove that from the table?
So moved.
I hear a motion to remove. And a second. Any comment—is that debatable? A motion to remove from the table? Is the motion itself debatable? Yeah, okay. Is there—are there any comments or questions on the motion to remove from the table? Mr. Henderson.
In Public Works, we talked, obviously, about this whole improvement project, and there was a point in the discussion where, I think—I forget who made the comment, but that there were some options that were available to us to even change how that ramp may look, that may lower some of the costs. Was that—was that Mr. Cooley? Did you mention that?
Hello. Can you hear the reception?
Okay. I just didn't know if—
Sorry, I'm actually about to call.
Right, so, that may—could change, the look of that ramp could change, depending on what options are available to us.
And if it did change, I'm assuming Mr. Girardi would bring back the certificate for us to assess the appropriateness of the visual look of our plan again, right? So we're—tonight, we're asking—you're—the city is asking the city to approve the, essentially, aesthetics—
Correct.
—of the current plan. If the plan changes, then we would assess the aesthetics of those plans.
Correct, and we would have to resubmit for the approval through the historic society also. If we change the look of—right now, you're just approving the way it looks, and if you decide to change that down the road, then we go back through the appropriateness, but then we'd have to go back through the approval process also.
Right, right. Yeah, that makes sense. I just know that was part of the conversation, and so it is—I think it's important just to bring up that it's an option, that it may change as we go down the road. But there is obviously a way for us to navigate those waters, should we get there. Thank you.
Absolutely. And also to note, the approval of the certificate is not—just like the approval of the last resolution was not approval to construct—
Right.
—the ramp or anything else, it's—the approval of the certificate is also not approval to expend the funds.
That's correct, it's just for the look of the ramp.
Other comments or questions on the certificate?
Motion to remove.
I'm sorry, motion to remove, yes. Thank you. Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the motion to remove.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the motion—the certificate is now the motion on the floor. Are there comments or questions on the certificate of appropriateness for 245 West Forest Street? Ms. Mealy.
Just—I believe that we've all agreed at this point that it is a beautiful and historically accurate design for the—or perhaps not historically accurate, excuse me, but historically sensitive design for the ramp, you know, on the front of the building. And I will be voting yes on the on the design, with the caveat that we're about to begin a bidding process, and where that process leaves us may well affect whether or not this is actually something that we can move forward with in good conscience. And so frankly, it seems perhaps a little bit like putting the cart before the horse to me, but given that we have the renderings and given that we have the paperwork filed, I see no reason not to approve this particular design and then see what the future holds.
Agreed. Other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the certificate.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the certificate is approved. Next item on the agenda is—
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Girardi. Our certificates of appropriateness for Harb, we have one, two, three, four, five items on that list this evening. Ms. Mealy?
I will be—I will need to abstain on one of those, and I apologize for not bringing it to your attention earlier, so if you'd like to take all of the items except item four and then item four, I'd be happy to deal with it.
So I'll divide that into two parts. For the first part, can I have a motion to approve items two, three, the—well, let me give you a little bit more context. Item two, which is at 306 to 608 Locust Street?
308.
I'm thinking that's 306 to 308 Locust Street. We're working on the porch in a variety of different ways. That's enough. Item number three, which is 755, 757 West Third Street, repairing damage, replacing lattice and handrails and spindles, and painting some lovely colors of Lewisburg Green and Saybrook Sage, Lancaster White, et cetera. The second item, number three, is at 334 Campbell Street, repairing rotted or damaged wood, repairing railings, removing banisters, and salvaging them or replacing them, patching and repairing and painting as well, as well as item number five at 907 West Forest Street, which is repairing rear carriage roof, replacing wood on the carriage house, the flat roof section, and repairing rotten wood on the main house. Is there a motion in a second to approve those certificates of appropriateness?
Second.
Hear a motion in a second, comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on those items.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and those items—those certificates are approved. Next item is item number four for 407 West Forest Street, where they proposed to rebuild an arbor—and rebuild an arbor. Is there a motion in a second to approve that certificate?
So moved.
Second.
Hear a motion in a second, comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank.
Ms. Mealy.
Abstain.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that certificate is also approved. Next item on the agenda is except for filing. We have the Public Works meeting minutes of January fifteenth, 2019, and the Public Safety meeting minutes of March twelfth, 2019. Is there a motion in a second to approve those for filing?
So moved.
Second.
Hear a motion in a second, comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and those are accepted for filing. Next item on the agenda is announcements. Council will be having an executive session immediately following this meeting for the purposes of litigation and personnel. The next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held on Thursday, May ninth, at seven thirty here in council chambers. Other upcoming meetings include on Monday, April twenty-ninth, at noon is the Planning Commission, Tuesday, April thirtieth, at three thirty PM ERC meeting, Tuesday, May seventh, at one PM Finance Committee, two thirty, Public Works, and at three thirty, Public Safety. That brings us to the end of our agenda this evening. Are there any comments from members of council? Mrs. Katz.
Just a reminder of the spring cleanup, since Adam isn't here, yard debris only, no grass. And this is going from—it started April twenty-second because people were asking, and it will end Friday, May tenth.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Mr. Allison?
I think everybody read in the paper that the Discovery Building was sold. I just want to thank my colleague, Councilwoman Mealy, for her pursuit of that in the face of a lot of opposition. It turned out to be a successful venture, and I think it's going to be a good thing for the city, and job well done.
Here, here. Other comments from my colleagues? Hearing none. Mayor, you or the administration?
Comments.
Thank you. Comments from the general public?
Yes.
Yes, please take turns and come to the dais and state your name and address for the record, please. And as always, we ask you to restrain your comments to three minutes to a matter of city business and address the chair.
I was out on my porch last night, and I received—
Just for our record, could you have your name and address?
My name is Patty Terry. I live at 923 St. Boniface Street.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
I'm not really speaker, so I try to hurry. At any rate, I was out on my porch last night, and someone brought another lawsuit to my house pertaining the city, and it pertains to the Bowman Field situation. So, this is all I have to say about it. The lawsuit and countersuit over the Bowman Field renovations, and as a taxpayer, I'm disturbed. This whole thing, because it appears the city isn't paying its bills. Negotiations over unpaid bills look an unlawful lot, like pay for play. After the mayor was just in the paper in Redding convicted and sent to jail, I'm not saying that what happened is illegal or criminal, but after the way, Bill Nichols and the mayor verbally attacked Derek Slaughter over him questioning the budget through our—with money running through RTV, which is funded by taxpayers. Why was the donation to the Hiawatha, an independent nonprofit, running through RTV, which is taxpayer-funded, mixed with payment for work done at the ballpark? And speaking of ballpark, that doesn't seem up to par either. Haven't we had enough of throwing money away on Bowman Field and the Hiawatha too? Does city council know about this negotiation? Did you know about the lawsuit? About the donation to the Hiawatha in exchange for lowering the bill owed to Lundie Construction? How much money has the city lost in all kinds of lawsuits? I know a few federal lawsuits against the city, and surprise, this lawsuit appears criminal. How many more surprises are we going to have? Is there any way taxpayers can see how much money is spent on the Hiawatha and on Bowman Field? And how much the city makes from these assets? We are making or losing money on these things because they look not right to me. This is supposed to be the most transparent city administrators—administration ever, but it looks anything but that. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your—
I have the papers if anybody wants them.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Please.
I just wanted to comment about the DCNR—
Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
I actually have three buildings that are within a hundred feet of the proposed The DCNR, the parking lot, Karl Kraus Funeral Home—
It just—because—for our records, for our minutes, if you could state your name and address, that's all we need.
Well, actually, I live in Lowell, Socktown.
That's fine, it's okay. It's okay.
Karl Kraus, 1420 Grand田 Boulevard.
Thank you. Now, please proceed.
The parking lot itself, I understand in talking with the Parking Authority, is at a hundred and five percent capacity as far as being utilized. I tried to get additional spaces there. I have three buildings in the area, 134 East Willow, 128 East Third Street, and 133 East Third Street. That parking, I fully, as far as the project, the East Third Street project, I support that wholly, although it's going to put quite a strain on the funeral business for six months. But, taking that apart, that parking away, without there being some other type of parking in that area, is, would put me out of business. My only option would be to raise one or two of those other buildings. All three of those buildings were eighteen fifty circa buildings. I'd like to keep working on them and making them something that the city would be proud of, but I had a visitation Tuesday evening, Tuesday afternoon, there were probably eight hundred people that came to the Funeral Home, and without parking in that area, I just, I wouldn't be able to survive. So, until the parking issue gets taken care of, if that's not taken care of prior to this park going in, my only option is to try to raise one of those other two buildings, or both of them. The two buildings, the 128, and I had owned 124 East Third Street, they were slated for demolition. I sold the, or 122, I sold that. That is being renovated right now, and I'm working on the 128 to bring that up to code, and it's partially occupied right now, and as I said, I'd like to make the city proud of those buildings, but without parking in the area, I'm not going to be able to continue there. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments from the public? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Hear your motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.